November eighteenth, regular meeting of the Neshova Regional School Committee. To order, we are meeting via Zoom and at this time I ask that those who wish, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, there are, I do not have any citizens comments to read. I do want to acknowledge that we received some citizens comments relative to an update about the mascot. Um, I asked the, the, the folks that sent it. I told them that we were going to be doing an update and that I would like to reserve their comments. I will pass it along as correspondence um to Steve Cullinan and Tiny Rich and to Brooke as part of that discussion. So I just wanted to acknowledge the receipt of that. Um, at this time, could I have a motion for the consent agenda Elaine?
Yes, I move to approve the consent agenda of November eighteenth, twenty twenty, containing the meeting minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty and the warrants of November twentieth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Um, second?
Second.
Was that you Amy?
Leah.
Leah. Oh Leah, sound like Amy. Um, okay, um, I'm gonna do a row called Vogue. Um, Amy?
Yes.
Uh, Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Joseph? Where'd he go? I'll come back. Um, Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. And Joseph? Okay, yes, okay. So that is passed. Okay, um. The, um, just a few updates from me relative to communication. At the last meeting, I mentioned some outreach that we had done with select boards of our respective towns. And want to acknowledge that the school committee um collaborated on a letter relative to our position about Tri-Town and made a proposal and a um, an invitation. And I'm not going to read the letter, but I would like it included with the meeting materials, Alita, and I would also like it posted to the school committee documents link on our website. Um, MASC Equity Presentation on November seventh, there was an incredible um presentation, virtual presentation by MASC. And I didn't write the, my, my printer died like a half hour before this meeting, so I'm at odds and ends, but I had the presenter's name written down, but I know Elaine, the presenter of the equity.
Yep, Dr. Kalise Wornum.
Yeah, and Mary was also at that presentation. And it was geared specifically towards school committee members. And a lot of the recommendations that she shared will Elaine has included, but it was, it was certainly a learning experience and the value was that it really spoke to what school committees can be doing. So um, we will include the, her, some of her guidance in our, our initiative moving forward. Elaine will have more information coming up. Uh, just some reminders. On December second at five o'clock, we will have, Steve calls it, um, I call it the orientation to the budget development process. And we started doing this a couple of years ago for our new members, although everyone is invited. And it'll just help you to understand or be a good review of the fundamentals for budget development. So um, um, let Steve know if you will be attending. Steve, I will be attending. I wouldn't miss it. Sounds like a lot of fun. Um, so that's December.
You maybe.
On December sixteenth, we will have legal training for school committees. Mike Macaro from Mercy, Murphy, Hesse, Tumi and Lehane. We started this last year and it was um, was really, really good. And like with all of our trainings, if you have specific questions um that you'd like Mike to address or topics you'd like him to speak to, send those to me. I'll make sure he gets them and I'll send out a reminder. Um, usually if we can get folks things the Monday, the, before a meeting, they can, can pull things together. So again, I will send out a reminder. And that brings us to the superintendent's report. Brooke?
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate that. So before I go into the report, just wanna just mention one or two quick things. I heard that there was some, some rumor on Facebook that I had taken a holiday and some sort of vacation. And it was true for two days. My uh, my email said that I was out of the office and so um, but I can assure people it wasn't a holiday, uh, but I would like to send out a special thank you to the emergency team, the ICU team and the vascular team at Newton Wellesley Hospital, who were absolutely beyond amazing. I am so beyond grateful for the healthcare that we have in this country and in this state. It is simply the best. Um, they monitored my every move. It was fantastic. So I'm so grateful for that. While I was in there, and this is just one of those things that we learned during this time period, I've had a lovely little neighborly lady who shared my room with me. She's um, she's about ninety years old, very, very sick though. Um, didn't know till the second day that I was with her that she was sick with COVID. And so I was immediately put on a fourteen day quarantine time period and that period is just a little bit up. So hopefully Saturday when I go to get my test, I'm um, negative again and again be back on site on Monday. So right now I'm just kind of doing the work from home as best we can here with everything. And so I also want to do a shout out to my team and to Todd for continuing to do amazing work. So thank you to everybody. Um, so in terms of superintendent report, snow days, just wanna talk about snow days quickly. Um, snow days has been a real, a topic for discussion around the state right now. Um, you know, certainly our commissioner feels um, I think quite strongly about the fact that we should be able to offer snow days as remote days. And he would be right. I think that we could do that definitely to, is it something that we should consider? Absolutely. We've had a lot of discussion and we've had a lot of discussion with our union, a lot of discussion with our staff. And I think, you know, basically where we've landed here is that if a snow day can be called well in advance, like we, sometimes we can see these storms coming, you know, two or three days in advance and we can see, we can have a lead up to it. Um, so those times may be times that we can call as remote. Um, but likely more than not, it's something, we don't know always if the storms are gonna hit until I get a phone call at three o'clock in the morning from Rob Frieswick, who will say, I'm driving on one seventeen and here's what you need to know now. And so the, the bottom line is there are gonna be some snow days where they're just going to be regular snow days. Just like old time, just like we always do. If we, if we can see something in advance and we're able to do something in terms of having remote, great. If not, it's just a typical um, snow day. And the um, ju- just keep in mind that if it's a remote day that we do, we don't have to make it up. But if it's a snow day, then we do have to make it up. And it's just kind of that simple. And I think where we landed ultimately with the union is, let's just play this by ear and see what happens. We don't know what type of winter we're, we're up against right now. So there's nothing to bring forward to our school committee right now. Um, other than the fact that this is kind of where we've landed. Let's see what happens as we, as we move forward. With regards to the HEPA filters, um, that's the second item here and I'm not sure if Dr. McGuire wants to pop in and say, bring up anything on this. Um, in, in terms of HEPA filters, we've, we've got a lot, ordered a lot in. Um, we do have some that are still on order, but any rooms that needed them um, as per the engineering reported or, you know, what have you, that has been taken care of. So these others are just kind of in the back wings. They're not absolutely mandatory for us right now for the, the engineer's report. Um, we have been also taking in the sessions that the DESE has been offering on this as well. They've had one or two of those and I know that Rob and sometimes Pat have taken those meetings in as well. In terms of school committee meetings, I think that that's one of the things we're just looking and saying, if this is something that you're wanting us to move forward with at center school in terms of outfitting center school, uh, to be able to do in-person meetings, we've had this discussion. I know you've had this discussion um, a, a couple of times now. We just need direction. If you want us to push forward, uh, I think we're just gonna leave it in your ballpark right now. Let us know and we're happy to uh, to make the calls in terms of getting things ready, getting things installed, if, if that's the route that you choose to take. So I'm just gonna leave that where that is um, at this point in time as well. The task forces, um, I know that you've brought this up, Kathy. And I believe Dr. Mike McGuire has brought it up as well. Our task forces have basically all been reactivated. Uh, I know that we have held our district, uh, district task force meeting this week. Um, I believe high school, and I think you've had several Kathy, that you've taken part in since it's been, uh, they've been reactivated. I believe all of our schools have. So, um, you know, we'll continue to kind of monitor those and keep you posted if, if new things come out of those. I know the high school has been working, of course, particularly hard on the, the new hybrid model. Um, that really has taken a lot of their, their time and energy. So appreciative of all of our volunteers that sit on those. The budget process is well underway and, and um, we've, we've spoken with all of our principals, our directors. They, everybody's got timelines. If you lead a unit or a department in our district, you've got timelines. Um, I do, I know that I sent an email to our school committee today saying that it's really important that this year of any years, we take our time to make sure that we don't miss anything. This is such a, this is such an interesting time to navigate. Um, I, I think that um, our process has proven to be solid, um, all inclusive. And I don't think that we want to stray from the process that we have used to date because it's been very effective for us. So I would want you to know that that's, that's well underway. Um, moving on. Luther Burbank?
Brooke?
Yeah?
Please excuse me. Could we hold our questions till the end? When Brooke finishes, I'll go back. And um, people can ask questions for the topic that, that they would like an answer to. But if we, Brooke could just move through this, then we can allow the time for, if there are no objections. Are there objections? Seeing none? Okay, Brooke?
Thanks. So Luther Burbank, I know that we've talked before about the fact that it is a national blue ribbon winner. Well, it was official on Friday. It was uh, referenced in the, the formal ceremony um, from Washington DC. So we just wanna say one more note of congratulations to the Luther Burbank staff and students and families. And everybody linked to that committee because it's such a huge deal. So that went down Friday. Um, the Neshova Regional High School Principal Search is um, on, ongoing. It's, in essence, started. Uh, we're just working through details now um, in, in terms of um, focus group meetings and such. And um, I'll leave it to Anne Marie. She must have um, put forward any additional information. But I know that there's a, a bit of information here about it as well. So if anybody wants to quickly get that, you can. Um, I know that parents will be required to pre-register to participate in the focus groups because it's just a maximum on those. So we're gonna, we'll need to know um, in advance. But you'll get information on that. So um, look for memos, uh, you know, in, in the next week on that particular um, component to the high school principal search. Uh, so Dr. McGuire, I'll turn it over to you for the last two items.
Great. So um, in the world of teaching and learning, um, some good news around some of the PD that we're doing and taking part in. Uh, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges will be hosting their annual conference and showcase. Um, they'll be doing it virtually um, this year. That'll take place the first week of December, December first through the third. Um, we've been able to solidify twenty participants this year. Um, and as you know, we are a member of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges because they are the accrediting instit-, accrediting institution for um, our high school in which we receive our accreditation from. So they offer some great workshops um, and seminars and, you know, lots of summer, summer programs. And we've been attending a lot of those virtually since we went um, uh, kind of remote and hybrid since March. And they've been offering a lot for us. So they'll be offering um, many more workshops um, this first week in December at their annual conference. Um, as noted, one of their keynote speakers will be Tony Wagner, who we, who we had visit Neshova um, last year. And there'll be a strong focus really on social emotional learning, particularly um, in the middle of COVID and remote learning and hybrid learning. They'll also be focused on innovation and technology and really navigating teaching and learning in both a remote and a hybrid setting. Um, and twenty of our district staff and administrators will take part in this conference uh, and bring back a lot of ideas to their buildings after this um, this first week in December. And then just the last one, uh, per usual, we're getting used to the Teaching and Learning is our department's latest edition of the download. I did forward that to the school committee late last week when our newest edition came out. And it can be found um, at the link that's in the superintendent's report. Uh, we also send that link out to the entire district um, through an email from the Teaching and Learning email address. This newsletter focuses on Google, the new, the new Google Meet breakout rooms, which is a new feature that's been added to uh, Google. Um, ideas for asynchronous and synchronous learning. We always do a staff spotlight, some upcoming professional development and lots of tips and tricks for remote and in-person and hybrid learning. So please check it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, my question is, uh, one more thing too?
Sure.
My apologies. It, it didn't make its way on here and I'm not sure that I'll take responsibility for why it didn't get on there. But I, can I please do a quick update on the mascot as well?
Please.
So thank you. So we've met now a couple of times. I know that Dr. McGuire has met with Jake Tessier, I have as well. And then we did another, uh, we had another meeting with him with Tanya Rich and Steve Cullinan the other day. We have something mapped out. We have a four month process mapped out that we're ready to get started on. Um, and he basically has laid something out. I'm happy to forward it to all of you so that you can take a look and see um, how he's laid it out in months in terms of the uh, process that we're looking at taking here. Of course, as a result of COVID, we're getting started a little bit later than we would like to. Uh, but we're grateful for his help is, certainly he has a great um, insight and vision as to how we can do this. And then of course, you know, as I said in, in my email to, to you folks today, I think the choosing the email or choosing the mascot will be one component. The mapping out and the, you know, the implementation of that is going to be another whole um, huge process for us to, to take with regards to the athletics, the, you know, the facilities components, all of that kind of thing. But I know that Todd has also met with Tanya and they, and I know Pat has as well, and they've talked through some preliminary budget numbers. So I would want you to know that that is ongoing and uh, we can bring that back again in December and at our next meeting and give you the update. In the meantime though, I'm happy to send out the, the proposal that he sent to us the other day. Okay?
Thank you. So if anyone has questions for Brooke about items on her report, please raise your hand and I will see. So I have Amy and Leah. And anyone else have questions? All right, if you think of them after um, I go with Amy and Leah, I'll, I'll check back in. Okay, Amy?
Thank you. Uh, thanks for the update, Brooke. Can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
Okay, great. I just had two questions. One was about the um, HEPA filters. Does that mean that all of the rooms in the high school that were identified to have the inoperable window? Are the interior rooms without windows and other spaces that they have all received HEPA filters? So there's?
The high school is all set to go.
Okay.
If Rob was sitting here, because he and I had this exact same conversation yesterday, the high school is all set to go right now without anything else in it.
Okay. Um, so is the second order for different, different buildings then or?
No, it's just actually just almost, dare I say, backup filters. Um, uh, uh, we're wanting to make sure that if anything goes wrong anywhere, we've got, we've got the necessary HEPA filters that we might need. So one goes down or if a, a window gets broken, we can't get it. Like, it's no different to the Chromebooks, to be honest with you. If you think along that line, right? We see this right now, something we really need in the district. Um, we can't, we can't be without some spares and some additional ones to uh, put into our buildings. And to be honest with you, one of the, you know, we weren't as concerned as much on the engineering's report, engineers' report with any of our buildings that includes the high school in Bolton or Stowe, but we did have to do some upgrades in Lancaster. So part of those are for Lancaster as well.
Okay, thank you. My second question had to do with the COVID tab on the main page where you said that you're um, you're posting current COVID information. Is that?
Right. So I, I'm not sure, is Todd on? I don't.
So Amy, we don't have a, we don't have a COVID tab under the school reopening plan tab. We have all of our COVID resources where we place any of our COVID resources underneath the school reopening tab. Um, we're gonna speak tonight to our COVID dashboard that, kudos to Lisa, who created our COVID dashboard. And if you look under important updates on the main district webpage on the left, you will see that we've placed that COVID dashboard right there so that people can access it. And we're also gonna highlight it and walk you through it tonight.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All set, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Leah?
That's awesome. Uh, first of all. Second of all, um, for the mascot piece, Brooke, when you update us at the December meeting, whether it be the second or the sixteenth, are you gonna provide us with the preliminary? I know that money was a big sticking point. Um, so can you just elaborate? Jen, they're doing it pro bono, correct?
Okay, I, I don't know if anybody else missed that, but I missed part of that question. Sorry. Oh yeah, other, other people missed it too. Can you do that? Can you please say that question? I just, you, you went out, you cut out for both half minutes.
Yes. I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So can you just clarify for the public, the organization that's helping us revision, they're doing it pro bono, correct?
Right, that's absolutely correct.
And so um, the piece about the budget, that's about implementation. Will you also be sharing with us how you've kind of mapped that out?
Yes, I think that we can give you a broad stroke overview of where we see that going. And that's really what I was referring to earlier, that Todd has already had preliminary discussions with Tanya on that. Uh, but it's not just Tanya's world, right? Because that, that's touched by this. It's like the whole school. You know, facilities will bring about its own component to this. Um, so a- as well, if you think about it, just about anything, right? Whether it's band or any of that stuff. So there's, there's a lot to look at and I don't even know that. Well, I think that they have thought through just about everything, but it won't surprise me that there are a couple of things that we, that are just still out there that we won't have thought of. But we certainly tried to be as thorough as we can.
All right, so that would be great. And then my other piece, just very quickly, I know small, it's not a small thing, but I'm just wondering about the Chromebooks for our younger kids and if we have any predictions on when the rest of them will be rolled out?
I'll turn that to Todd right now, because I don't know that I, I don't know that I can respond to that. Todd, are you able to respond to that?
Yeah, Succi has been in constant contact with the company. So they've, you know, said by the end of, you know, end of November, first week of December. And it's because they have been backordered. The nice thing is that the company that we have gone with was not the company that actually lost the hundreds of thousands of Chromebooks that were supposed to be landing here for several school districts. So ours are still on order and, and certainly on their way. Um, and it really just is the, the mass back backlog across the world in the, the nation with that. But they still are, are on their way. And the minute they get here, we will be deploying them as soon as we can. And we know that they're going over to those elementary schools so that we can continue to equip. Um, but again, if somebody needs a loner, they can certainly email Chromebook support and we will get them one. And, you know, kudos to the tech team who's been just on top of that sort of stuff. And uh, we understand it's, it's certainly a delay and a little bit of a headache, but you know, um, we're doing everything we can to make sure that kids have devices.
I think too, coupled with this, this doesn't, isn't really your question Leah, but I would just let the school committee know that a lot of districts are fighting themselves up against the whole notion of like not having, speaking of not having things, not being able to get their hands on HEPA filters. That's another huge problem across the state right now. We are very fortunate that we were so ahead of the game on that and have things um, in place. So the last backorder of what's coming into us is just, it's okay, it will be here when it gets here. It's, but it's not critical to us. The critical stuff, I am so impressed and so proud of our team because it was here, it was in place. So we're seeing the same thing with HEPA filters as, as we are with Chromebooks.
Hopefully all set? Okay, Steve?
I would think that the appropriate place for the uh, additional costs for the mascot change would be in our budget proposals, uh, which we'll see in January, the initial asks. Uh, I hate, I would not want to burden anybody with having to do anything uh, over and above what they're, what they're doing now. And I would like to see those numbers broken out when we meet in January. Okay, Brooke, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Had a couple of things. Um, Brooke, with regard to the mascot. Um, the mascot will be retired and as of January first. That's the expectation. That was the directive from the school committee. And so um, however, whatever that has to, to look like, I think we're in a, in a good position unfortunately because of the pandemic. Um, but just to refer to ourselves as Neshova until such time as there is another icon, if you will.
Yeah, and I, and I think that you're seeing that already through our athletic department, to be honest.
Okay. Um, the other thing is that I will be forwarding the um, the um, the letter that I received from um, this group that has been very involved, invested in our um, commitment to equity acceptance and racial justice and their advocacy on behalf of changing the mascot. I'm, I'm, they have a number of questions and um, it would be good to see how their questions jive with some of the, the process that goes on to, for the changes in the survey. So I'll be forwarding that. Okay? The other thing is that we had a couple of letters relative to the way that uh, the principal job description was posted, that it did not reflect our commitment to um, looking at our policies and practices relative to um, um, so many things. Um, but, but um, in, in this case about hiring. And I know that we spoke um, over the weekend about reconnecting with NESDEC to make sure that, that um, job description was more reflective of this commitment on our part. So.
Sure. And right after our call, I immediately reached out to Anne Marie Stoica, our director of HR. Anne Marie, do you wanna do a follow up on that?
Sure. On the um, on the letter, that's the invitation to apply, that's going to go out there, run out there, um, changing that. So that one of the categories is, one of the job responsibilities is respectful of and embraces diversity. Underneath that, they're gonna put another bullet that will say dedicated to promoting equity, acceptance and racial justice, and then, and an enthusiastic proponent of restorative justice. So that will be right on the, under the major job responsibilities. Also too, they um, didn't have a, an anti-discrimination uh, statement like we do in most anything. So they're gonna add that it will say that applicants are considered without regard to, and then the fourteen purviews, um, the typical fourteen purviews.
The other thing is I was surprised that the principal position was, I know that we turned it over to NESDEC. Um, but in other districts, I know that. but in other districts, I know that they post everything on their website, and that we did not have the principal position posted on our HR website. Is there a reason?
That's just a timing thing.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's gonna be up there?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so... Oh, and then this is for the rest of the committee, relative, we've been talking about the meeting in person, and we started this conversation, I think, back in August. And good information to say that it would be approximately $48,000 to equip the center school area with the technology we need to accommodate what we need to accommodate. And at the time, I know that Mary had said that she would require meeting remotely. As the numbers change, and not in a good way, I shared with the superintendent that I would not be comfortable meeting in person, that I would, my preference, I would meet remotely. And in a subsequent conversation with Steve Rubenstein, he said the same thing. So what I'm wondering about, a couple of things. We know that if we meet remotely, if we meet in person, it has to accommodate those of us, and also members of the public, that would have to be there remotely. But I'm wondering where we stand just in terms of the money, the cost. Because even if I was cool with meeting in person, at this point in time where there is, and this is, I'm just giving you my opinion, I'm concerned about spending $48,000 when we don't know what's ahead of us for the rest of FY '21, and then as we look forward to FY '22. So what I want to get a sense of from folks is if they want to make this an agenda item for December 2nd, to think about the pluses and the minuses, and then vote on what we want to do. Brooke would need our go-ahead to spend that kind of money? Or do you want to just poll now to see where folks are? So I'd like to hear from people in terms of what their preference is. If you want to really take this under discussion for December 2nd, I can put it on the agenda. So can I just see a show of hands if people want it on the December 2nd agenda to make a decision? I see Steve, Leah, two, three, four. Amy, here?
Just a point of clarification.
Yeah.
Are you asking whether you want to make a decision on taking a vote on whether to spend this money or not at that time, or?
Yeah, I think that we have, we've... Brooke unfortunately couldn't be with us a couple of times when we had to, when this has come up. I don't, I want to allow us the time necessary to have the conversation. That's why I'm asking if we want it as an agenda item to make a decision one way or the other, but to do that at the December 2nd meeting. So if people want it on the December 2nd agenda, and we will decide at that time, please raise your hand so I can see the disposition of the committee. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, I see six hands up, and the other hands are not up. So someone who did not raise their hand, what is your thinking about what you want to do with this item? Steve?
My question is, why do we have to wait on making a decision like this?
Well, I'm just asking. So do we want to discuss it now?
The numbers are getting worse every day. Why are we rushing, you know? What difference is it going to make? I think of a statement that I saw the other day where the term "common sense" was used, and I'm just wondering, why do we have to wait? I would think we could take a vote on whether we want to go forward with that right now.
Thank you. Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My colleague from Stowe just stole my thunder. And in interest of full disclosure, I was vehemently in favor of finding a location where we could meet in person back during the summer months, when I was under the assumption that perhaps as we got into fall, we wouldn't be seeing what we're seeing right now. And so I just want to say, I'm gonna become a complete hypocrite here. I put it in writing to the superintendent today. I believe what Mr. Rubenstein is saying is exactly what we should be doing. I'm prepared right now to say to table this thing permanently and to have no further discussion. I would rather the district spend their resources and their time and their effort in other areas as opposed to finding us a location at that cost.
Leah?
So I think I would feel remiss if I didn't share with the community what I shared with you guys via email, and that is that buying the equipment... I'm not saying that I agree with meeting in person, but what I am saying is that we are exempt from the meeting regulations of eight people per 1,000 square feet. We're a municipal legislative body, and we don't need to actually meet at center school. If we wanted to meet in a classroom, just like teachers are with their students, we could, because we are exempt from those rules. So we don't actually need to spend any money. I think that the question is, do we want to meet in a confined space where we might not be able to allow the public into the meeting, although we're not letting them in now? So I think that the conversation is slightly tilted and not totally accurate. If we vote on buying a microphone, the microphone is not necessary, is what I'm saying.
And how would we ensure that members who do not...
We would livestream the same way that I do with my students every single day, where I include everyone. I'm just saying, like that, I feel like it needs to be said that we are exempt from those rules.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Rich?
Two quick things. One, I think this price point is absurd. So absurd, that's what I was saying.
Wait, whose point?
The price point, the cost.
The price point, okay, I hear you. Yep, yep, yep.
$46,000 is just crazy. I don't know if we've gotten a second vendor. I share Leah's, you know, concern that we would have to meet in center school. But either way, I mean, this is, doing this in center school is... This could be utilized by the town of Stowe for annual town meeting or special town meeting. So if we did want to pursue what seems to me is extraordinary costs, then I think we should be pursuing how to fund this with the town of Stowe, which owns the building.
Anyone else have a thought? Sharon?
I guess I just feel like I don't understand why we're having a conversation about spending money on this, on a project for us to have meetings. We can effectively have our meetings on Zoom. It is not ideal. But it is effective, and there's many, many other things that we can spend that money on that's more important, I think, than creating a space wherever it is at that cost.
Other thoughts? Leah?
I'm sorry, so there are not just two options. There's option number one, which is meet on Zoom. Option number two, outfit center school to have some multipurpose space. But there is option number three, where we can meet in the school committee room, because as of what you just said, we're three down. And so there would technically be like 10 of us. I imagine that there might be enough space in that room if there's no public. So I'm just saying, there's a third option possibly, that we would sit six feet apart in that room.
So Joseph, if I wasn't, I might have not been paying attention at the Roberts rule. So if there is a vote to table it or postpone it, do we need a second to do that?
Well, Madam Chairman, if memory serves, back in September, we voted to rescind the August vote.
Right.
So I would suggest that technically, there was really nothing before the committee, or the committee has not voted to direct the superintendent administration to do anything at this time. So I guess what I said, you know, the superintendent indicated that she was looking for some direction from the committee. I guess from a motion standpoint, I don't think we actually need anything. We just do nothing, and nothing happens. But if the superintendent wants an affirmation as to the committee's sentiment on this, I'm prepared to make a motion of some sort to that we table this indefinitely or do something similar to that.
So if we table it, we can postpone it or table it. If we table it and we don't get back to it tonight, it essentially is DOA. If we postpone it to another time, then do we have to designate when that time is? We could wait till the first of the year to postpone it.
Well, you could set a date certain, or what you could do is, and I would borrow something akin to what we do in the practice of law, would say, we continue something generally, which means it's just continued until such time as the committee decides that it would be brought back. So that would be my sentiment at this point. It's somewhat akin to what we're doing with regards to the high school, at least we were until recently, saying, we'll see how this goes, and we'll take it day by day. And if sometime in the near future, we decide we want to revisit this, we can bring it back.
So how about if you make a motion, and let's see what happens?
Fine, I would make a motion, Madam Chairman, to essentially table any further discussion or the, you know, the dedication of resources of the administration towards finding a venue in which the district committee could meet in person. I would move to table all of that generally.
Table or postpone?
Table.
Second.
Okay, so Alita, can you read the motion, please?
Who was that that seconded it?
Steve.
So let me see if I got this right, Joe. You tabled the motion, you tabled any further discussion or direction to the superintendent regarding school committee meetings in general?
Let me clarify that. I'm moving to table any further discussion or the dedication of district resources towards locating a venue to allow in-person meetings by this district committee. And we table this generally, we table any discussion and dedication of any resources in this regard generally, meaning we're just gonna continue it until a date uncertain in the future. And if anybody wishes to bring it back at some time at that date uncertain in the future, they certainly have the right to do so.
So this is what I have. I have tabled any further discussion regarding the dedication of district resources to be used for locating a venue for in-person meetings. Does that capture it, Joe?
That captures it in its entire essence, Madam Chairperson.
Okay, I'd like to propose an amendment. The amendment would be to substitute the word "postpone" for "table." You know what we learned about the difference.
If you table, if we vote to table it, and we do not take it up by the end of this meeting,
Yes.
it dies, but it gives anyone the opportunity to bring it up again in the future.
Okay.
Is that correct, Joe?
That's correct.
Okay, so I withdraw my amendment, as long as that's the understanding.
Point of order, Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Do we need, I think I remember him saying that we need a two-thirds vote for tabling? Is that right?
See if it's in my notes.
Everybody's flipping through their notes.
I know.
I have none.
Table, not debatable. No, not for calling the question. No, if you called the question, you needed two-thirds vote. I think a table is a simple majority table.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was just gonna impose upon my colleague, Mr. Rubenstein from Stowe, that I've never heard of a two-thirds requirement on motion to table. So yeah, I think that you're right, it's on a motion to end debate. That requires two-thirds vote, but to table it does not. A simple majority will work on a table.
Okay, so we have a motion, and the second, the motion is to table any further discussion regarding the dedication of district resources for the purpose of locating a venue for in-person meetings by the school committee. Okay, discussion? Mike?
Yeah, I guess I'm gonna try to stay a little bit more open-minded, but for those that, I mean, there were a good number of us that decided that they were not prepared to vote on this on the original date, the subsequent meeting. I'm wondering if I can hear from them why they're not prepared, or perhaps even why they would be in continued support of this.
Continued support of what?
Continued support of moving district resources towards this school.
Okay, so you're looking for who's actually in favor of the money to do what needs to be done?
Correct.
In a nutshell. Sharon?
I misunderstood what Mike was asking. I was saying I don't want to continue this discussion because I think it's a non-starter.
Okay, other comments? Anyone want to respond to Mike's question? Oh, Leah?
I would just say that tabling does not end the discussion for good, so that's an important point.
Okay. Okay, any other? Okay, there are no objections. I will call the vote. Sharon? We are voting about tabling the thing.
Yes to tabling.
Sharon is yes. Steve? Where is he when you need him? Lee?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Okay, Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes to tabling.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Steve?
Yes.
Okay, the eyes have it. Yes, 11 yeses, zero no's, zero abstentions. Consider it tabled, thank you. Now, moving right along, hang on. Okay, so, all right. The next item on the agenda has to do with building committee leadership. So the building committee is a subcommittee of the school committee. And Brooke is eager to get the group together and begin the process. The meetings, format, and topics are guided by whatever MSBA module we are in. But I believe it is important that this committee, because it is a subcommittee of the school committee, be chaired by a school committee member. We have three members on the committee who are acting, who are on the committee because they are school committee members. We have another school committee member on it, but that is not his role. So the chair's position would be to... The meetings would have to be run according to open meeting law. The chair's position would be, one of the roles would be to be the interface with Brooke, with MSBA, to report back to the school committee, to be a point person with the towns. The three school committee members on the committee would be responsible for putting together protocols for how the meetings will be run. And also, very importantly, with what the systems of communication will be with the school community, but also with each of the member towns. Recall that both Brooke and I, in a conversation... both Brooke and I in a conversation with MSBA found out that when the center school project was underway, there were issues related to, we don't even have the specifics, but it seemed like we were flagged for some reason. And then in conversations that I had with Tom Ryan, the town, the chair of the select board in Stowe, there were problems with communication, especially with regard to getting financial information and reports. And I want to make sure that that is not the case with with this committee. So, um, I would entertain a a nomination for someone to serve as the chair. Steve?
I would like to nominate the Honorable Joseph Gleason to be chair of the building committee.
Can I have a second? Sharon will second. Other nominations?
Sorry, can I ask?
Yes.
Point of order question here?
Sure.
Um, if it's a subcommittee, don't subcommittees of the school committee usually do their own elections?
Yes, they do, but there, I think that in this special, to me, this is special, but there are subcommittee, there are subcommittee, but they have 20 other people on the committee with them. So, um.
Okay, I didn't I didn't realize there was like interpretation here. I figured there was like a.
There's very little.
They're all hands off.
Yeah, there's very little guidance, but I think that, and again, we're just getting started, but I want to make because of the issues that were raised by Stowe and by MSBA, I want to know that we have, I don't know, I'll use the word control for lack of a better word, and can provide input and.
I have a feeling we just lost Kathy.
Okay. Brooke, were you going to say something about that?
I I'm happy to pick this up. And Kathy's absolutely right. There there's very little guidance, I think. And I don't want to speak for her because, you know, we certainly had conversations on this, but I wouldn't be speaking for her. But I certainly reached out to MSBA and said, you know, is there anything specific we need to know about this? Is there any guidance that you can give us with regards to either the leadership or the protocols? Like I said, is it just Robert's rules? Is it like, what can you talk to us about this? And basically, MSBA came back and said, in essence, there's nothing at all that that guides us or that we can tell you, hey, this is what you should do. But they said, but you should check with your legal counsel. And so for this particular project, we do have somebody specific, Murphy Hesse, that helps us to oversee this. His name's Peter Mello. He's a great lawyer and he helps to oversee everything from every piece of verbiage that you've approved, to you name it. Peter has his name stamped all over it. He works very closely with MSBA, so he's a great liaison for us. And so we also connected with him and said, is there something that we need to know about this, what you're thinking on this? And I think, again, I hate to speak for Kathy because she's not here and I don't want to say something if she agrees it with. But I think, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's a slight or a negative to what happened before. And I really want to be cautious that when when we talk about other projects in the district, there's not a negative to it because I don't see it through that lens at all. With that said, however, we certainly were flagged and and they did talk to us about this and they did say, you know what? You need to learn from that other project 10 years ago and make sure that the same kind of thing doesn't happen again, whatever that thing is. Now, not that we were given a lot of specifics. Kathy was absolutely right. We weren't. But it was kind of more than enough to say, okay, so should we take a look in at least at the onset of this group? Should we maybe have a school committee member that helps to kind of set it, set the tone? This is a school committee project. I mean, it's a town, townwide project too, but the school committee has the initial oversight on it. And so I have a feeling, again, I hate to talk, speak for her, but I have a feeling that's maybe where her thinking might have lied with this. So maybe she'll come back in and say, you know, that that's not all what she was thinking. I think it was just like learning from the past and saying, okay, so if we're going to start this, let's start it on the right foot. Let's make sure that we've got somebody here that's that can interface with everybody, exactly as Kathy said. I don't think it, it certainly doesn't matter to your superintendent who that person is, but it does make sense that it's a school committee person that would help to kind of liaise between the communities, be liaised with the school district superintendent and MSBA. So I think that that's kind of, that's kind of where, why she landed where she did, I think, from my perspective.
Okay, and I just want to be clear. I have great respect for my colleague, Mr. Gleason, so that wasn't about his nomination.
I didn't, I didn't think it was either.
Suddenly, it became real for a moment that I was going to potentially vote on business of committee that I am not on. And so that that's just kind of where it came from. I, it looks, it looks like Kathy's back. I was actually going to suggest tabling this until she could get back on because this clearly, she clearly needs to have some input in this. But Kathy, are you back with us?
Yes.
Okay.
Just so you know what I explained to them, I basically, I can do this in a quick snapshot, I think. So basically said that, you know, from MSBA's perspective, it wasn't about that something really bad had happened in Stowe or anything like that. That wasn't it at all, but there are lessons to be learned right along the way. And we want to make sure that some of the things that happened then don't happen now. And so it's not being bad or awful or anything like that. It's just like, okay, it makes sense that if we can have, not the MSBA saying this. You know, and again, I don't want to speak for you, but it makes sense that if we have a school committee person in there, they can liaise between the school committee, superintendent, MSBA, et cetera, and the communities. And so I think that that's kind of where your headspace was going, but I didn't want to speak for you, Kathy, but I did.
What I heard from Tom Ryan, that's my concern, and that appeared to be a breach of trust. And I know it was a while ago, but I want to make sure that that we are able to understand what they're looking for in terms of communication. And I mean, I just look at the work that's been done on the school committee and by the district with improving systems of communication and sort of an ongoing evaluation of everything that we do related to communication. And so that is my, and it might, you know, this committee is going to be together for for a while. The the chairpersonship is likely to change. When I was on the the high school one, you know, 20 years ago, is actually, oh, it was a guy, yeah, it was the principal. So it was someone from the school committee who was the chair for that committee. But in the interest of being able to get the committee going when it's convened for the first time, I think it's important that the school committee have a chair in place on that committee. And that it be somebody from this committee. That's. Mike?
Um, I'd just like to ask Mr. Gleason if he's accepting the nomination.
Thank you, Ms. Horish, through you, Madam Chairman, and it would be an honor and a pleasure to accept the nomination. I hope that, you know, that if elected, I will certainly do my very best and I'll leave it at that while we go through the nomination process.
Thank you. So Amy, you had a question before I got knocked off the meeting. Did you get your question answered or what were you thinking?
I think so. I was just becoming a little confused as to whether we were electing chairperson of the MSBA committee or a subcommittee of the school committee within the MSBA committee, but I think my question has been answered through this discussion.
Yeah, there's no such thing as an MSBA committee.
It's the building committee.
This is the building committee that is a subsection of the school committee. The component, the configuration of that committee, though, is basically laid out from MSBA. But this is a subcommittee of the school committee.
Okay. Oh, Mary?
I would like to speak in favor of Joseph Gleason in this role, his experience prior school committee experience, as well as his knowledge of Robert's Rules of Order, whether they are used or not, but his familiarity with that. I think he would be a sage leader and let all voices be heard, so I just wanted to speak in favor of Joseph Gleason.
Any other comments?
My only comment is, is this going to be our first motion without a second?
No, didn't somebody second?
No.
Oh, Sharon.
Sharon, thank you.
Yeah, I did have Sharon. I wrote it down.
Oh.
Yeah, Sharon did.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I have to do, oh, Leah?
I wonder if, so in my research of various committees, there were a couple that had vice chairs. I wonder if that sort of organization gets decided later or is this something that we do now?
I think my thought was to get a chair and then have the three people from the committee meet. And like on the on the agenda, I have, I have the building committee protocols. I think that that if our three members can work that out and go forward, if you want to do a vice chair from our group, I have no objection to that. I was just, I was thinking about the tip of the spear, Leah.
The only reason why I mention it is because we have three towns and this is going to be an enormous commitment to have one of us be the chair and to be the vice chair. That's what I was actually contemplating. So I guess we can just talk about it later in September.
That's a, that's an interesting approach, actually.
Yeah. No, I think it would make sense to have a vice chair. And again, this is a long haul commitment and some of us, some of you will still be around, some of us will not. So, but just to get it started, I think it's important to to put some things in place so we can get started. And especially where, you know, this committee and folks on it and the folks working on the the building committee have been, had such great ideas about communication and presenting information. It would be a good, a good start so that when the whole committee comes together, there is some kind of a plan for meeting protocols and communication. Does that, is that helpful? Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Okay, the the vote is to elect Joe Gleason as the chair of the Neshoba Regional High School Building Committee. Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Enthusiastically and with tremendous gratitude, yes.
Yes, thank you. Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine? And Leah?
Loving how you do this in a different order every time. Yes.
I have to give Rich credit because it was Rich's idea and because I'm so linear sometimes. I do everything in alphabetical order, so I'm always first. And Rich said the optics of that is bad, and he's right. So I'm trying to be nonlinear. But I have a little list and I keep track, so.
It makes it real hard for me to follow.
I digress, sorry. Okay, but the good news is that Joe has been enthusiastically and unanimously selected as the chair. And Leah has her dinner. Yeah, it looks good. Um, so I will leave it to the chair and the vice chairs to organize and meet with the superintendent. I think your next job is to talk about meeting protocols and to get some ideas about communication and then interface with Brooke in terms of getting the whole committee together. But Joe will take the point with Brooke and MSBA. And if discussions are required with town officials on behalf of the committee, that would, Joe would take that point too. Okay? Congratulations, Joe, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe.
And if it just could indulge me for one second, I want to say thank you to Mr. Rubenstein for nominating me. I'd like to thank Ms. Park for seconding the motion. I'd like to also thank Mr. Horish for his very kind words, as well as Dr. McCarthy for those very kind words. And the last thing I just want to say, again, I will take very briefly about this, is that to my colleagues, Ms. Verrito and Ms. Cohen, who will be serving with you, I want them to understand that, you know, I am nothing more than a little worker bee drone. That's what I do. I listen to these meetings. I hear the ideas coming from Ms. Verrito and Ms. Cohen. I think that you'll be glad that I'm the chair because it's going to be up to me to rely on you to come up with the big ideas. I'm not an idea guy. I'm a lawyer, and as Don Henley once said, lawyers dwell on small details. I'm leaving the big details up to my fellow colleagues. So thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
You're a wise man, Mr. Gleason. Thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda, the the building committee protocols, et cetera, has been turned over to the Joseph, Leah, and Amy. And so now we will have, Brooke has a presentation on remote learning model in December. So Brooke?
Great, thanks. So I'm going to ask either Alita or Todd if one of them can share the screen and we can start to go through this. And Todd, I'll look to you to kind of help help us out. So I'm not coming to you tonight to promote one style of model over another, so I want to be really clear on that. But but I think it would be foolhardy for us not to come forward and say, we're concerned, right? And and we're concerned about a number of things. Now, I know that we sent a memo out a couple of weeks ago, about two weeks ago, with some data. And I know that Todd's going to share the screen or Alita in a minute here and show you kind of that updated data as of tonight. And and I think one of the things that has been problematic for us is that we have had people come into the building when they really shouldn't have, either staff or students. And that makes it difficult for us for contact tracing because then we have a whole pile of people out, students and staff quarantining for 14 days. And it's just, it's problematic every every time. And so let's just go to, once you're able to go in there and bring us up on the first slide.
Yep, so Lisa's here with us tonight to discuss this with specificity, but.
Come on, my apologies.
Yep, she's here. So Lisa's going to talk to this with some specificity. We met at length today. So it's an ever, it's minute by minute, as we know.
Literally, minute by minute, weekends, weeknights.
No, walking through my office every other half an hour to give me the latest update. So we thank Lisa for the incredible amount of work that she is doing as it relates to all of this across six schools in the district. She certainly is our go-to. And every single morning, she comes in with an incredible specific update on what's going on in the district. And I know the principals as well, as all of us have been relying on her with the information that she has. So the next slide that I'm going to put up there is the is the current statistics that we have right here as it relates to testing. So I'm happy to turn it over to Lisa if she wants to speak to these numbers.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Lisa.
Yes, and I apologize. I can't put my screen on this. Technically, we're working on, I don't have a photo. So I would love to have you all see me, but you can't. I apologize. So these numbers, as we look at data, is only as good, I will share, as what's been recorded, so to speak. So as we know, as of, these numbers increase daily. 142 staff have been COVID tested, and those are the ones that we're aware of. Some staff members, if they choose to get COVID tested, whether it be on a weekend or on their own, and don't share that information, they are not included in this, right? People have the right to have their own personal health, so I just want to make that clear that I would assume that some of these numbers are a little higher. We know some staff clearly test randomly. clearly test randomly for their own personal preferences. And those are not included because again, we don't know those numbers. So the number is a little on the low end. 387 students have been COVID tested. And again, those are the ones that we are aware of that are hybrid. That does not mean that all full remote students have disclosed COVID testing. Some have. I'm not saying that they don't. But not all. So this is again, numbers that we are aware of. Forty through, 43 staff have been quarantined. Some of those quarantines are 14 days, some are 28. And so that is problematic. I will share that over the last two days, we've seen an increase. It doesn't sound like a lot, but we've had four staff members within two days that are quarantining and some will be 28 days quarantined based on their specific scenarios, which is quite problematic for staffing, so to speak, for our principals. 105 students have been quarantined. Again, the 14 or 28 days. Four students have tested positive within our district that is a hybrid mode or in-person. Six staff members have tested positive that are in-house. And then we also have three remote students that have tested positive, again, that we're aware of. There may be more positives that have not been shared regarding remote. I will say and share that our nursing team in each building has worked tirelessly and trying to get, really tirelessly and I applaud them for their efforts in trying to maintain the health and safety of our buildings on a daily, weekend, evening basis. It has not stopped since March and I really applaud them. I, my, they're making me look good. And, and I really need applause to them. Next slide? And then if we click on the dashboard that's been created, this was last, thanks Todd, I appreciate it.
No problem.
So there's yours.
This is, Lisa, this is what we posted under important updates on the front webpage. So if people go to that, they can go right to this link and it's on there.
Sure. So again, as I mentioned, three remote, 10 in-person, which means either students and our staff combined. And that's total cases since the beginning of the year, again, that we're aware of, that are in the remotes, in-house, we obviously have a handle on remote. There may have been more and just in report. And then the state weekly public health reports, you can click on that link and they come out weekly now. They've changed the metrics a little bit, as we all know that we've seen the color codes have changed. This is the most updated one as of 11/12. And basically, it's taken right off that web, that website. So Bolton are in gray with the new color metrics and Lancaster is in yellow and you can see the numbers there. We're still seeing high numbers coming through right now. And then the school health of office data, again, through the 16th. The updated figures I just provided the slide before, I had a little more updates since that 16th there. But this is just, you know, those that have referred for testing, those that are in isolation, quarantine, contact versus school. And then the quarantine contact, meaning outside of school or at home. So we still see some numbers there. And then we have some definitions of isolation versus quarantine because people tend to interchange those together. And there, there is a little bit of a difference. I do have, like I said, some concerns over the last few days in our testing. As you've seen in the news and we're seeing it in the schools, as of Sunday, it's taking longer to get testing or to find a testing site. And the results are coming back slower than they were. We were receiving results sometimes on the same day, if they tested in the morning or within 24 hours, and we're now seeing three days out. So when we have a staff member or a student that is being tested and cannot return to work and/or school until that result comes back, we're seeing a little bit more of a delay now.
Lisa, while you're online with us tonight too, can you quickly just talk? And I mean really quickly because I didn't ask you to do this ahead of time, but can we just talk through contact tracing and what that looks like in our district? Because I think that, I think it's important for the school committee and to know and our public what that process looks like. You don't need the exact details, but just a broad stroke overview would be, would suffice.
Sure, I, I will share with you that contact tracing takes quite a bit of time to do, based on the case, right? And each case is very different. So when we find out that an individual tested positive, we really look at, we, we really look at the calendar, right, to look at when they were tested, when their last, when their symptoms started and when last exposure were to either other staff or students. And it really, it, it really starts there, right, getting the details. And then the individual that tests positive, it, it does take usually around an hour to an hour and a half, depending on the dynamics of their day, whether it be a student or staff. And we literally go minute by minute. We start off with when you left the house that day, when we're looking at the day that we have to contract trace. Were you in a car or on the bus? And if you were, who was sitting next to you, we really go step by step. We go period by period. We really contract trace staff first. What staff were in close contact, so we can identify those staff that need to be in quarantine. And then we look at students. To do them simultaneously gets very confusing. So we have to do one over the other. So again, that can take a few hours. We look at recess, lunches, whose special's been in the, in the classroom, if they've been pulled out for counseling, if there were substitutes that day, etc. We really go through the entire day. And then during this process, the local board of health has notified that we have a positive case. And if there's any questions along the contact tracing path, they, we're in constant communication. So if I have a question that I'm, I'm, there's a gray area and I'm not quite sure of the answer, we reach out or if I need clarification or confirmation that I'm on the right track for them. We also then, once we identify all staff and speak with them and just, and explain quarantining, then there's letters that go out to the entire staff saying if, that all contact tracing has been identified. And we have been in touch with those that have been considered close contacts. And then we start with students and do that same process. And then reach out to families to notify them. And then clearly, I'm in touch with the superintendent several times throughout this entire process to keep updated because it does take that long. We collaborate very well with the building administrators and those that are involved and reports go out to, the final report goes out to D E S I. I have to report of those that are hybrid or in-person, remote students are not provided to D E S I. So that's per their guidelines. They only want those that are in a hybrid or a full in-school. We don't report out to those. And then I send a spreadsheet to the local board of health of those that were in close contact, so they can continue that process. And then they take over at that point. When I say they take over, I still reach out to families and/or the nurses do to make sure that they, they don't have any further questions. We check in and ask that they be tested usually around five days after the last exposure. If they test too soon, they could come back negative, but then test positive four or five days later. And we're seeing that now with a lot of these quarantines that are coming up. It's people that were exposed, it's five days later that they're coming back positive. Was that quick enough? There's so much more to talk about, but that's a nutshell.
You know, I, I said to the principals when we were meeting the other day, I mean, Lisa, you've just been the glue for all of us through all of this because it's, it's just so big and it's so enormous. And I don't think that people realize how, how big, especially the contact tracing, how extensive that process is. And I know that, you know, I've talked in phone calls when we're dealing with this. Especially some of our cases have taken like all day just to do the calls.
Correct.
And we've never rushed our parents. We've never, you know, so that if, if they've got lots of questions, you know, like you were saying, it can take 20 minutes, it can take 40 minutes. It just depends on the parents, it depends on the situation. And each situation is different. Like, we really haven't had one in the same that, that I can think of. What, what's troubling to us at times is when we end up losing 10 or 11 staff out of one building in one house. It, it's a real challenge for us. So, so Lisa, I, I thank you so much. So I don't know if anybody's got any other questions on this as, as we take a look moving forward. I think Todd, can you go to that? Thank you. I think the, the final thing for us is, and we just want to put this out there, is we're saying, okay, Shell, from your perspective, because again, education is, is local and, and so, you know, it's supported by our local school committee. If you want us to consider making a change after the Thanksgiving break or after the, the winter holiday and into January sometime, we kind of need to know, we should be thinking about that. So the two things really before you, unless you can think of a third, which is absolutely fine, or fourth or fifth, is status quo, just stay the course, doing what we're doing right now, which is the hybrid model for the elementary and middle and for remote for the high school. And/or do you want us to consider full remote for the entire district? Between the Thanksgiving break in, in January and pick a date if that's, if that's your choosing. I would tell you, reaching out to a lot of different school districts, quite frankly, you know, we're, we're seeing some districts like Marlboro or Clinton or, I think Waukesha is another one that's just had to move right from either in full remote, hoping to go to hybrid and saying, no, we can't do this, and/or saying, no, we have to go to full remote. So you've got some of those one-offs right now. For the most part, the districts that are, that I'm talking to are saying, I think we're going to try to leave the status quo. But with that said, I think it's so critical, and I know Todd, feel free to jump in here, but we're, our concern is that sometimes we don't know from day to day if we're, we're not going to have to close down a building for a 14-day period. Or Lisa, you know, I, I think back to, you know, we've had a couple of situations in the last even couple of days where we go home at night and we're thinking, depending on how that one test comes back, we may have to, the board of health may tell us that we have to go full remote immediately. From the, from our, our perspective, I think we just want to really make sure that parents are really clear and, and our school committee, that if we stay status quo, we just want you to know that although we'd like to stay hybrid, there is no promising that we can stay hybrid throughout the month of December because we just don't know what's coming our way. And it's not being negative and it's not being distrustful or anything like that. We, we just honestly don't know. And, and we don't know from day to day, quite frankly, right now. The, one of our, so two things could happen, you know, either COVID and implications and/or some of those implications are that we lose so much staff that we can't run the building, right? So it, it, it could be COVID-specific related and/or it could just be the implications and we just don't have the staff to be able to do it. So that's kind of where we're sitting. And I think we are just looking for some, some general feedback tonight to say thoughts on any ideas you might have on any of this. And I'm not sure where Lexington is at or Hudson. Well, actually, I think Hudson, I believe that you're staying status quo. So I'm not sure if Lexington was doing anything different. And if I've got that wrong, Leah, feel free to let me know. So thank, thank you for putting that, that up there. Thank you.
So, so what you're looking for us is to see where we sit with this.
What you're thinking is right now?
We continue what we're doing with an awareness that certain conditions may prompt us to
Move to full remote.
Move to remote. Now, are you thinking that it would be, and we're only talking about the, the pre-K eight, correct?
That's correct. And it, it could end up being building to building.
Okay, that was my next question.
Yeah.
Because of, say, the inability to adequately staff, say the Hail School. It would just be Hail that's affected, not all the schools across the district.
Right.
Okay. So let me see who wants to comment and record that. So there's Leah. Who else would like to comment? Oh, Sharon and Mike? Who else? Amy?
Amy.
Who else? All right, I'll circle back. So Leah?
Leah, am I correct? Is it, is it status quo for Hudson?
Yeah, yeah, we'll stay hybrid as long as we can. We did go full remote for two weeks because staffing problems. So I totally understand that. So just two clarifiers for you really quick, Brooke, or who, or maybe it's Lisa. Is D E S I kind of holding to its threat that they would punish districts who do this proactively? And could you clarify what your, if you have kind of a pivot plan articulated? If we need to say pivot Hail to full remote immediately?
I don't, I, I'm willing to bet none of us want to touch that touch the comment about the commissioner or the D E S I right now is my, my first.
Elaine does.
So perhaps Elaine might be the one to better, better suited to respond to that than I would, quite frankly, Leah. Anytime D E S I tells us to do something, we, we need to be paying attention. So, you know, with that said, and I know that this is not necessarily the popular line of thinking, but I would remind everyone that the education is local and it's local decision. So, you know, I mean, D E S I certainly could do things and, and the governor certainly could do things that are in their, their wheelhouse. At the end of the day, though, I think everybody still acknowledges that it's local decision. I don't know if that's a very good answer, but I think in terms of pivoting and such, I'm not you know, that's a great question. And, you know, Kevin Keven and I were, were talking at some length about that even tonight as were some of our staff, saying, what does that look like exactly for us, you know? We've got lots of different ideas out there. Even, for example, when we, I know this is not the same topic, but snow days, remote days, we already have a plan in place for that if, if we're, we're set to go. And I think that probably the plan that we kind of have in place with that probably would fall into place with this as well, to be honest with you. I think it's transferable.
So I would just ask, you know, would the, would the cohorts combine, right? I asked you guys this a couple of months ago and you just hadn't realized it yet. So would A and B combine and then you get five days of teacher time?
I don't know that I have an answer on that tonight, Todd, do you?
Though it was discussed at length at our principals' meeting this week. And so it's certainly something that's on the table as an option, Leah. There just hasn't been like a specific decision around it because we're not, you know, obviously moving to that. But it's certainly one of the options on the table to allow that all students would have that synchronous time with teachers. But it certainly is introducing, obviously, another component to a teacher's schedule that, you know, they're not necessarily or have been used to in terms of combining those two. So it would be figuring out a way to transition and transition gracefully and smoothly to that, should we need to.
And we've, we've had discussions on, on that front as well, Leah. So I, I don't think that we're prepared to come out tonight and say, here's what it's going to look like. But I would want you to know that we've had lots of discussion.
But we are, but we're certainly in favor and the principals have articulated that they would be very in favor of combining those two cohorts so that all students would get the same inequitable experience if we were to move to a full remote. So that was the last component of our principals' meeting that we came to an agreement on. It would just be that now, putting that into what does that actually look like, if, if that's what we're going to do.
So I would struggle to vote for this without knowing the answer to those two questions.
Okay. Can, can I ask somebody else a question now? Oh, let's see what, are you good Leah?
I think Elaine was going to answer the D E S I question.
I think I'll save that for the grand finale. Sharon? Did you have your hand up?
I did. I just wanted to throw out a question as food for thought, and that is, what is in the best interest of the children? Is it in the best interest of the children to have a controlled switch to remote learning happening at X, on X day and returning to school, projected return to school because we don't know what will happen on X day? Or is it better for the children to stay with what they are, where they are now? where they are now until or if it becomes necessary to switch? So I don't know if there's really an answer to that question as much as I'm thinking about food for thought, what's really going to be in the best interest of our kids?
Yeah, I, Catherine, if I can respond to that. Sharon, I almost see that as a rhetorical question, because you're you're right. And I think that that's why when we said tonight, you know, I would go back to what what Steve said, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, the common sense bar would say X, do you know what I mean? Whatever X might be. And then there's all this other stuff that you're kind of thinking about in between. There's not, there's no right answer on this one. There just is no right answer. And I think for people that might think, you know, the routine, at least kids would know that we're going to go for remote, at least staff would know that we're going for remote from, pick a date, November thirtieth to, I don't know, January eleventh or whatever it is, you know, whatever you you would choose, if that's the way that you want to go. At least there would be structure there, right? Where and you're being proactive as opposed to if we're staying status quo, we're going to be reactive, right? So you're kind of, and of course, our administration never likes to be reactive. So this is always a hard place for us to be, because we like to be proactive with things. But right now, it the certainly the the trending is is staying more status quo. And and just for whatever it's worth, and I I see that at seven thirty at night, but I I just now got a text from DESI to me specifically at seven thirty at night. So this is why I would be very cautious, you know, I think, were they, are they watching this meeting?
They're watching Elaine.
You know, they just, they just texted me.
Sharon, go ahead.
So just kind of a, to tack on to that question, because it really was a rhetorical question. I don't know that there is an easy or straightforward answer to that question, but just again, food for thought, that that when we had to switch out in March, when we suddenly switched from regular school to what's happening now, it was very traumatic for a lot of people, a lot of kids. And just, I I want to be thoughtful as we're making a decision to be really thinking about the kids and what is in their best interest in terms of consistency and in terms of for them as as little people that they really need to know. It's fair to them to have some understanding of kind of what's happening, and they need that in order to really be resilient and pull through this in a good way.
Thank you. Mike?
Oh, sorry, I I wasn't sure if my speaker was on. Thank you. Before before I ask my questions or make my comments, I just need a little bit more clarity. What exactly are we voting on?
We have, the superintendent has asked us to decide or to give a recommendation whether or not we maintain the the current model, the status quo. And I'm I'm guessing that somewhere in there there would be some kind of a contingency plan in the event that we couldn't adequately staff a building and would need to go to remote. Or we just make the decision that from Thanksgiving, and and there are some districts that have done this, from Thanksgiving to January, whenever we get back, first, fourth, whatever it is, that we just say, we're just going to go remote and and just as a precaution. So that's the that's the the two choices, but as Brooke mentioned, there may be something in between that. I think that there was a point of clarification that we could make the determination instead of blanket for K eight, to do it on a school to school basis. And one of the major criteria would be, do we have enough staff to adequately provide the educational program for kids? So does that sort of capture what you were saying, Brooke?
Yeah, pretty much. I think in a nutshell, unless, Mike, you've got some, I I was just looking for direction and just putting the offer out on the table to say, this is something you can you can think about or not. It's completely up to you, because I mean, for all intents purposes, and I think it goes back really to to Leah's question. I mean, the state would probably look and say, and again, we'll see what Elaine, I'm ever so anxious to hear what Elaine has to say, but, you know, we're not red. So the state would say, well, why would you even consider looking at making a being proactive here? Are you being reactive? So, you know, nothing is compelling you right now that that we've got numbers that were saying, oh, my gosh, this is awful. But what we are seeing is a number of staff that are missing because of quarantine or whatever, we're saying. And we're just saying, we're concerned. We're putting it out there. We're just letting you know that we're concerned. And not all districts are experiencing what we're experiencing. And again, that's why I I so understand local control more now than I ever have. Because every district is a little bit different. You know, when I take a look at my husband's district, they have very little contact tracing. I I don't know what Lexington is experiencing or Hudson, if you're experiencing a lot of contact tracing to the extent that we are. But it's a lot. It it we have done a lot of contact tracing. So I think it's I think it's up to every district, Mike. And and I don't think, I I again, I said right at the beginning, it's irrelevant to me where you land in all of this discussion.
Thank you. So Mike, what do you got?
So I guess I have a question and a comment. My first comment goes back to our August eighth meeting when we first started talking about the criteria that we referred to, the the conditions that we would need to prompt a move to full remote. And it wasn't until a meeting or two ago where we finally asked for concrete clarification as to what those criteria are and what they will be. And that's really a critical piece in making these decisions. And we're going to be getting those on December first. And I think in the absence of those criteria, I think we run into a couple of problems. Number one, I think invariably, I'm asking, and I'm sure we will continue to be asked the question, how do we know that we've made this decision? Why and how have we made this decision? What conditions have been met that would allow us to make this decision to go remote? And I think this is exactly the kind of situation that requires these criteria. And again, we don't, we don't have these criteria. We won't have them until at least December first. Frankly, I don't know if that's just for the high school or if that's district wide. But this is exactly the kind of situation that I was hoping to avoid, that we were going to make, you know, these these sweeping decisions without criteria in place. And, you know, it also seems to me that without these criteria, how do we even know when it's right to return? So it almost feels like without the criteria, there is a massive open-endedness to this, that we could find ourselves on January first or second and saying, well, we're just going to keep going because the numbers continue to look like they're concerning. So I I think, you know, this this was the value of establishing these criteria, you know, a month or or really just antecedently to the event.
So Mike, excuse me, please, I need to make a point of clarification with you. The 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 motion that we made was to see a hybrid plan that the high school would go to. We did not say that we would list criteria for moving into that. So I want to be very careful about that. The, if you go back and look at the motion, it's to present a hybrid plan. And we were very clear that we had no timeline. So I I just wanted to to make that point of clarification.
Yeah, so I guess my, I guess my point was that on August eighth was the first meeting that I brought up the notion of what's the criteria.
Okay, yep.
My personal input. The second thing that I'd like to add is a question, and I'll I'll ask the question and then I'll kind of fill it in with some detail. Why a full month? Why are we considering a full month of remote when A, you know, other districts that will go remote for maybe fourteen days, allow the majority of the quarantines to take place and then move back. So why would we be going a a full month? And then I completely agree with the idea that this could be building specific. I think that our approach has to be critical on this. It can't be broad. So I guess my question is, why, why are we considering a full month when frankly, thirteen days from now is our first day of December, the conditions that we're being asked to vote on haven't even unfolded? So it it makes it very difficult to, from from my point of view, to defend why we would both make that decision, why we've extended for a full month.
So Brooke, did you want to?
Yeah, a couple of quick thoughts. Again, I said this before, I'm going to say this again. I am, I am not supporting one direction or the other. And when you talk about, could there be something in between, you're absolutely right. You could, for example, take a look at, and I think the condition, Mike, is Thanksgiving, right? That's the concern, is what's going to happen fourteen days after. So we wouldn't know right now, because Thanksgiving hasn't happened. And I think people are generally concerned that maybe people are not, maybe not everybody, even though we're being asked to do a virtual Thanksgiving, is going to. So then you can also, so you're right, you're absolutely right. You could take a look and say, well, we could just do this fourteen days after Thanksgiving, which you could. What we're also seeing, though, and I don't know if you're seeing this in your districts or not, but what we're also seeing is people that are looking to leave, and I'm talking families and and others that are looking to leave fourteen days before the twenty third. So we're seeing that juncture. Right. So that they're kind of showing that they're they're completely clean before that December twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty fifth area, right? So I I'm just letting you know that we're getting requesting for families who are saying, we're going to be leaving on, you know, pick a date, right? So we, so it kind of gets back to Sharon's rhetorical question about that level of stability and what does that look like, rather than in and out, in in and out. But again, I am, I am not wed to anything, but I do know that we would be phenomenally naive if we think that we're going to stay status quo and not have any issues. I am not saying to go to full remote, but I am saying that if we're, if we're going to stay status quo, it will not surprise me with what we're seeing already for trends, that we won't have some issues there. That's all.
Mike, any other questions?
The only other thing that I would add is sort of a response to Sharon's questions about options and 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 asking who who is sort of a guardian of these these options. And in my opinion, the option goes to the parent, and that that option has already been exercised. Those who feel like they would be less safe have chosen the remote model. And those who feel like their kids would do better interacting in person have chosen the hybrid model. So I actually feel like that option has already been exercised, but that's just a comment.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with some of the points that have already been made, and I don't want to rehash them. But, you know, if the options that are being presented to us are status quo or full remote from Thanksgiving till January first or second or whatever it is, I I I just don't think those are the choices that actually face us. I think that there are other choices and we should be looking at the choices on building specific, at least building specific, if not even more drilled down than that levels. I think, you know, if you look at the COVID dashboard that has been shared, which is awesome, by the way, and I really applaud the efforts of everybody who worked to get that up on the website. You can see on the, that there are some buildings where this is more of an issue than others. And, you know, if I'm reading the memos correctly, I think that there there might even be a building that hasn't had any positive cases yet.
That's correct.
So to me, it seems very preemptive to be talking about putting the entire district on a full remote model. Because I think that what's best for, if we're really truly thinking like Sharon said about what's best for the kids, I don't think that's best for the kids to make everybody go into a full remote.
Someone turn off their radio or whatever's making noise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So I guess what I wanted to know is if the issue, if the if what's driving all of this is staffing issues, quarantining of staffing and not being able to staff the buildings?
No, that's not what's driving this, but but it's certainly.
Well, I think to Mike's point, it's very important to define what's driving the decisions. You know, like, what 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 is the point that would make us go consider the district being full remote? Because what I thought I heard you say was that there's not enough, if we get to a point where there's not enough staffing to run the building, then we have to go to full remote. But that's really the only thing that I heard.
Go ahead, Brooke.
So I let me just speak to that for a minute. So for example, and and I I've got to be careful, because I know Lisa will slap my hands big time here and in not not oversharing, but so I will do a hypothetical situation. You could hypothetically have all of the adults in one program that affects few children. And in that case, that really doesn't affect the whole body, right? It just affects that. And we've had that. And so and that's the neatest and tidyest one probably that we've had. As opposed to, you could take that same number of bodies and put it right over a school, and suddenly that staff, and and you do the quarantining plus. So for example, you've got somebody sick with a cold or pneumonia or this, that, or the other thing. You might have sixteen or seventeen bodies out of a staff right across the building. That's a whole lot different. So it could be almost the exact same numbers, but it's how those numbers flush out in a building that makes a difference. So that's why sometimes straight metrics alone are are not a strong indicator. Because that could be, so I would give you another example. We have now had not once, but twice where we had, we we left work at night thinking that we might have to close the building down for two weeks per the Board of Health because of the person that was going to be tested that night, because that particular individual had a lot of contact with a lot of individuals. That could be just one person that could end up closing a building. And so it's, it it, that's why I I understand what you're saying about metrics, but I'm telling you that it's just so much bigger and much more complex than that. I wish it was easier.
Amy, did you have something else?
I did, if that's okay.
Sure.
I I guess my, two more points. One is, would, is it time to revisit the memorandum of understanding to see if there there are conditions in that that could be re negotiated to try to solve some of these problems rather than putting the whole district on full remote?
Oh, my gosh, that has nothing to do with the MOU. Absolutely nothing to do with the MOU. But but let me, if I can speak to the MOU for just a moment here. One of the the strengths, I think, that has been shown through this whole process between the administration and the union is the fact that we see our MOU really as an ongoing, I don't want to say evergreen, because that's probably not the best terminology for it, but it's an ongoing, living, breathing document. Not all districts see it like that. And again, I don't know, I can't speak to Hudson or Lexington, so I'm not sure what you folks have, what your experience is. But our experience right now is that that document is living, breathing. So if we, if at at any point in time, we feel the need that we have to make a change, then we immediately go to the the party and say, we need to talk this through. And and sometimes it's something that we feel that, okay, if we really do need to make a change, then we're going to have to come back to school committee to ratify. They'll have to go back to their union to ratify, et cetera, et cetera. If it's something that we can work out without coming into the MOU, then we do that. So the MOU right now is not driving any, any of this at at all.
What about the issue of live streaming?
That has nothing to do with any of this discussion right here.
Wouldn't it solve some of the quarantining issues?
But we do have people that are, that like, if you'll recall, and maybe Emery, you might be able to speak better to this than than I can, where is Emery? There she is. Maybe just speak to the last piece that we just put into our MOU to allow this, so that wasn't problematic. Can you just speak to that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. We'll be agreed with the association, and I think you all read.
ratified it, was that if a person is quarantined but asymptomatic, that in that circumstance, they can do their work from home. So they can teach from home if they're quarantined, but don't have symptoms themselves. If they develop symptoms, then of course they don't, they don't teach. And the quarantine had to have been issued by a public health official, including our own nurse leader.
I also want to be cautious, oh, thank, I'm sorry, Emery, were you finished?
I was just going to say, it, it opened it up a little bit to be a little bit helpful with the staffing issues, but also, you know, preserve the idea that if people are sick, you know, people are sick and, you know, that sort of thing. It was a good intermediate to help us through.
I think I want to be cautious that we don't, on this, this particular meeting here, start to go down a rabbit hole of the MOU, and that is not at all the purpose of this discussion. And an MOU is something that's negotiated, so we would never want to tip a hand in how we're negotiating anything. So I, I think we want to, Kathy, I would just say, we want to be really, really cautious with any discussion around the MOU, but I would tell you that it is not something that is at this point in time hindering us at all or as part of this discussion.
Okay. Also, Amy?
My only other comment is regarding if, if the district does make a decision to go to full remote, I would just ask that we make sure that there's, we've considered all the equity issues around access to devices and, you know, make sure that we thought about that. You know, making sure that, that kids who, I know that we've already offered that anybody who needs a device can, can get one, and that's, I applaud that, but I think it's, it's a little bit different to, to, they'll need devices more all day long if they're fully remote. And, and that's a different situation for my family. I could see it being different.
Thank you. Steve, you had your hand up before? You all set? Oh, Todd.
I have to get my hand up.
Yes, Todd?
Thanks, Kathy. I also wanted to bring up a point that I don't think that it's been brought up, you know, so first of all, and it's, it's not like we're coming and just presenting two options. I think we're finding on the day-to-day basis, the things that we continue to run into that we want to make you aware of. For example, you know, the big thing with principals this week is, you know, the Thanksgiving holiday is coming up. We recognize people are going to travel. We recognize people are going to be together, and we also recognize what could potentially happen the week or two weeks after that. And so we've had a, a very large uptick in parents requesting to take their kids out of school and go remote for four to six weeks because they are nervous if we stay in school, that there could be spread because of the holidays. And so that begs the question of, well, wait a minute, if they're going to take their students out and go full remote, we now have to, we now have to present an answer to that. Well, you can't go into Remote Learning Academy because that would be a different teacher and that would not be a smooth transition for those students and Remote Learning Academy is full. And then we would have to bring upon teachers, well, can we get work for students who their parents want to take them out? And so now we have to have teachers provide work and get the work, or is it that they make up the work when they come back? That's just, that's just one other example of things that we're running into and meeting with Lisa and talking about where these numbers are going. And on a day-to-day basis, we're just trying to present you with all of the facts that we continue to run into so that we can have a discussion about this. I don't think it's necessarily like it's one or the other. We're just looking and, and you know, I meet every Friday with a series of groups of schools and Brooke meets every Monday with a series of groups of schools. And we're seeing a variety of schools do just a variety of different things based upon what they're seeing as well. So I think we should get out of that kind of linear of there's one option or this option. We're trying to present to you all that's on our plate on a daily basis because we're trying to provide, obviously like Sharon said, what is going to be best for these kids as we enter this, this month-long, if not more, where we could, you know, see, you know, more uptick or more people out.
Amy, I want to see if other people have comments. I know I have some comments and questions. Would you mind waiting?
That's fine. I want to follow up on something Dr. McGuire said.
Okay. So let me just see who else is. Rich, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I mean, the genesis of this seems to be there's districts in the area that are considering, for instance, taking five days off after Thanksgiving to give that incubation period when people might have COVID to see if it pops up so that they don't come back asymptomatic and then infect the school and disrupt the operation. So I think that's one idea. If we did want to be proactive on this, if we were worried about the disruption from staffing and from students, that if we did feel like this was a concern and, you know, frankly, from my reading of the data, everything's going up, right?
Yeah.
Deaths, cases, whatever it is. And we can debate whether schools are contributing to that. I personally don't think they are, but they, but if outside forces like small family gatherings, which if you read the governor's advice and the CDC's advice is what's driving this, a holiday is probably going to drop more infections. And so I think if we wanted to be proactive, we could, for example, consider going fully remote for five days after Thanksgiving. Not necessarily proposing that, but that's just one idea that I've seen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Um, anyone else? I wanted to make a couple of points, if that's okay. I think that we find ourselves in a very different place than we were in March. Somebody had used the analogy of in March, someone pulled the fire alarm and we all ran out of the building and we didn't go back until over the summer. And then where we find ourselves now involved a lot of, of planning and organization and consideration of, of so many more things than we had the wherewithal to deal with in March. So I think the model, both at the high school and at the pre-K8s, is, is, is going well for the, those, those populations. I think that the idea of routine in terms of the role it plays in an educational program and in a school is very important. And our kids, whether they're in hybrid or remote or full remote at the high school, have an established routine that has been in place since the beginning of the year. And that in and of itself creates a level of, of comfort, predictability, consistency. So I am in favor of maintaining the status quo and making a decision based on conditions at a building. And I see, as Brooke pointed out, not the only consideration, but a major consideration is the ability to adequately staff a building. And there were no subs. I mean, that's the other thing. A lot of the subs that we depended on in the past have said, not this year, not until things are back to normal. So the pool of subs we have is, is very small. And, but with this idea that we may maintain the status quo and then make decisions building by building, I think it's important to say to families, have a contingency plan just in case. Because the sad fact is, and it's been, it, it sounds almost trite, but it's true, we don't know. In August, we were tipping under, we were under 1% positivity. And then it's just exploded and according to the governor, it's because of, of households. Well, how are they getting it into the household? There seems to be some mystery around that. However, we are a relatively small district. The fact that we have three towns means that our, our kids are organized into relatively small buildings. And as I, I think, I don't know if it was Lee or Amy that pointed out, when you look at the activity across the district, there's a, there's a building where there's been virtually nothing. So I'm in favor of maintaining the status quo. However, letting parents know that they need to have a contingency plan, probably relative to childcare, should we need to go to remote, but also making sure that there is a system, a systematic plan if we have to transition. To Leah's point, what would the plan be and, and what would that look like? Because people can deal with most things if they know what to expect, even if it's, even if it might not happen, just to know that in case this is, this happens, this is our plan moving forward. So that's, that's where I stand in, in all of this. Amy, I'm, I'm going to ask that if you're, if you're questions or comments, I, I know that you had a question, you had a concern about devices and technology and you wanted to go back after something that, that Todd had mentioned, but if it is relative to, to, if it's not relative to making a decision or adding to the conversation about the decision, I'm wondering if, if it can wait?
I think it's relevant because Dr. McGuire brought up, one of the reasons for considering this is that some families are, have approached the principals about wanting to take their kids out for four to six weeks or however long the period was. And, and that kind of begged the question, then maybe we should be considering this across the board because we have an issue of how to put them in the ROLA, you know, that's cool. So I guess what I was wondering is I heard him saying this, is that if, if our teachers, if our hybrid teachers were live streaming their classes, then it would offer flexibility to the families that wanted to keep their kids at home, you know, during that time and wouldn't disrupt any of the models that we're currently offering. That's why I brought up the need to revisit the MOU or MRA, because to me, it seems like the elephant in the room, that, you know, it could be a solution that is on the table, but it's not.
So let me interject something, if I may, relative to the MOU. We have an agreed-upon MOU that has been signed. It has been negotiated. We have to be very careful in our discussions because one of the items in the MOU, I think it's item number 16, states that teachers will either teach in person or remotely, but not both simultaneously. That has been agreed upon. For us to pursue a discussion relative to that can be seen as negotiating outside of the contract slash MOU. So I just want to, to put that out there, that that's my concern. If, and that's how I'm going to leave it. Steve, you had to put your hand up?
Yes, now I do have my hand up.
I saw you.
Okay. First of all, we agreed a long time ago, or, or we were informed a long time ago, that once a child is in the hybrid system and the parents decide to move them into the RLA, that's where they're going to stay. There's no back and forth because the teaching is not meshing, I guess you could say. Am I correct in that, Brooke? That once they go into the RLA, you're, you're?
I'm actually going to turn this over to Todd. I think that what we said was when, and Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are, we see that there are some natural times for progression and transition between the models. And so we're very accepting of that. And we also have had families who have had some really difficult things that have come up that we have made some, you know, changes and alterations because they needed that support. So I mean, I think that we've, I think that we've been flexible where we've needed to be flexible. Dr. McGuire?
Okay. Thoughts on? That's, that's fine. That's, that's, that's all right.
Yeah, just the principals and I in the Teaching and Learning Department have crafted language around that, the ability to move between hybrid and remote or remote and hybrid. And that would happen at a natural break in the schedule, and that would be at the trimester mark.
Okay. The next thing I wanted, I, I keep hearing the term live stream. We are not live streaming. We are not going to, as far as I understood it, we will not be doing live streaming because live streaming opens us up to too many situations where certain children whose parents do not want them to be seen on the screens would be, would be subject to that. And I think we have basically, as a group, stayed away from the concept of live streaming, although it keeps getting brought up in a few places.
Steve, excuse me, excuse me, we're not going to live streaming because it's in the MOU. That, it was agreed, it was negotiated as part of the MOU. And again, I want to caution folks about the optics that we may be trying to influence outside of a negotiated agreement. That's like caveat.
Okay. The only, the only other thing is I have to go back to what Sharon said about the movement of going from hybrid to remote to hybrid to remote. And I have to go back to the first two words I said this evening, and that is common sense. We are dealing with something that this country hasn't, or the world hasn't seen in the last hundred years. The original pandemic took almost 10 years to fully resolve, and this one is nine months old. And I think that we have to be concerned, not only, that's not mine, I have no dog. We, we have to be concerned about the homes, Thanksgiving, if it's not Thanksgiving, it's Christmas. And this is, COVID is not a hoax. It didn't go away in the warm weather, as we were told it was going to be. We are still looking for a fully effective vaccine, which most of us may not get until second quarter of next year. I think we have to be aware of the situations and we have to be aware of keeping everybody safe. That's students, parents, grandparents, teachers, teachers' parents, maintenance people, the, the, the guys who are going around twice and three times a week fogging up all of the schools and all of their people. We cannot look at this in a vacuum of a small group of people who are just absolutely berserk on putting people back into classrooms. And I think it is up to us to bite the bullet, give Brooke the, the, the field that she needs. I agree with the idea that we should look at it on a building by building basis, but we should not be afraid of saying, the numbers are too great. What are we going to do? We're going to wait till she can't staff every single building in, in, in the system for it to happen? Like a stir is an orange or whatever it is, yellow or whatever the, this week's color scheme is. And I, and we have teachers and staff coming in from outside the three towns. So you can't just look at the three towns. I think we have to give Brooke the, the ability to be flexible, and I think we have to give her the feeling of the group that we would like her to approach it on a building by building basis. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has not had an opportunity to speak that would like to? Mary?
So I'd like to continue in terms of common sense. I'm also to say that I think this, this discussion is, is very important, especially right now. And so one of the reasons for this to come up, as Brooke has said, another, and Steve was mentioning, Thanksgiving, holidays, and for our parents who are watching to realize that we can all continue to play a part in keeping all of us safe and being able to keep the schools the way they are right now. And then, so I would be in favor of keeping the hybrid, you know, the status quo in the high school as it is right now, but realizing that it's not necessarily inevitable that, that the numbers will rise if people were able to maybe sacrifice a bit and just have Thanksgiving with their immediate family. I know that there are some districts who are asking families to sign agreements. And if they're not able to do that, if they are going to be traveling to either that they were quarantined or, I mean, there are, there are different things going on because it's so important. And also we realize that small, small dinner parties, small gatherings, well, that's, that's Thanksgiving at its smallest are, are part of the spread right now of COVID. And so if parents would really like to be able to continue in as much hybrid as we have and to look forward to the time where we can in as much hybrid as we have, and to look forward to the time where we can bring students back in person, that really behooves all of us to think, what can we do personally to be able to um, maintain safety for as many people as possible? So I'm in favor of status uh, quo, and with the understanding that this would be Brooke and the administration's decisions in regard to individual schools, and obviously, there are factors, um, lots of faculty being, being quarantined, not enough substitutes, then that could mean um, that a, a particular school will be shut down. So we won't be called in every single time, these are Brooke's decisions to make. Um, however, in the meantime, uh, for all the reasons that we've said, um, I would like to see our students who are in, in hybrid be able to continue that. Um, but if I could make one more appeal to parents to think about um, giving up some plans perhaps for this Thanksgiving to meet with extended family um, in the hopes that we would all be in such a different place next Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mary. Um, I think, Elaine?
Thanks. Um, I feel like this might have been hyped up a bit too much, um, but I, I do wanna answer Leah's question and then make one comment. Um, the commissioner and the governor have said in public that these decisions are matters of local control. Um, and I think that's exactly what we're doing here tonight. We're having a thoughtful discussion about staying focused on what matters, and that's the, the students. Um, to paraphrase one of my favorite school committee members who also happens to work for M A S E, in terms of punishment, I, in my opinion, I don't think it's a very good use of their time to target specific districts for specific decisions that they don't agree with that fall under local control. Um, that being said, there is one area where I actually agree with uh, Desi and the governor, and that is community transition really matters. Um, I think it matters more than in-school transmission because the measures that we're doing inside the schools work, but people are walking into the schools from cases that they're getting outside in the community. Now, the problem is that the schools don't control what's happening in the communities. The governor actually has a lot more control over that with what is open and what is closed, and what is allowed and what is not allowed. And if people are getting these cases out in the community and they're walking into the schools with them, well, then the schools have to deal with that. That, that then becomes our responsibility, and what I think a lot of people are missing, including the state, is that from what I see, we have three operational issues that will wind up being the criteria for whether a building shuts down or not. It won't be a matter of simply cases up or cases down, but there's three factors. One is staffing, and I feel like we've discussed that ad nauseam tonight. The second one is contact tracing. If you can't efficiently do your contact tracing, then you don't know who are the people who need to be quarantined, and those people are just walking around all of your buildings, um, and that's a problem because that's a measure that is now not working. And then the third thing is the turnaround time for testing. If it takes you five days to be able to get in for testing, and then it takes another seven days to turn it around, that's more bodies out of your building, or potentially more bodies in your building that you just don't know what status is of. Um, and I feel like any one of those, or potentially a combination of all three of those, is what's going to end up making the switch to full remote. So what I would, what I would suggest is that we stay the course and we hold on as long as we can, but now is the time for every family to start thinking about their contingency plans, like people have said, because the trade-off to holding on as long as possible is that this will be an abrupt transition, and it might be an uneven transition. But that's the trade-off for trying to hold on as long as possible in a situation where we just don't have the control.
Thank you.
That's my piece.
Um, Leah, I think I wanna move this to a conclusion to give Brooke some direction. We've been discussing this for um, almost forty-five minutes, so unless there is something new to add, um, go ahead.
It's brand new. Um, I would, um, at five forty-nine, W C V B put out an article tonight that said that Nishoba is among the towns that's going to be given, or some sort of a testing program in-house, but only while we're hybrid. So that could alter that third point that Elaine just identified.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to poll the committee if there are no objections to see where folks are. Um, Amy, so the two options that Brooke gave us are, um, which you'd like to see is who would be in favor of going full remote or maintaining the status quo, but with the understanding that any transition to remote would be building by building. Amy?
I'm in favor of status quo, but I saw that Brooke was trying to say something related to the testing program, and
Yeah, two things actually. Uh, first of all, Elaine, I think you were so eloquent, and I, I think that you just captured everything perfectly, so thank you. Uh, hats off to that. Um, Leah, to your point, um, we, we have no other information tonight, or we would have shared it tonight, which is why we're not, and your, your word could is imperative. We don't know, quite frankly, because the rules of the game, and, and the rules of engagement have not, have not come forward. I'd also, at this point in time, because you brought this up, thank our Lisa Gilbicki, but yet again, because it really is because of her that this is going to be able to potentially happen in our district.
Thank you. Um, Brett?
Uh, status quo.
Rich?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the um, with the hybrid. I'd like to give parents a choice.
Joseph?
I'm gonna go in a different direction here, man, and I'd actually be in favor of full remote as soon as possible.
Thank you. Mike?
Status quo, please.
Mary?
Status quo.
Sharon? I'm sorry.
Status quo.
Okay, Steve?
Full remote.
Elaine?
Status quo.
Leah?
Status quo.
And I am in favor of status quo. So we have nine members in favor of status quo, with the understanding that uh, we would ask parents to make sure there's a contingency plan, and decisions to go remote would be made building by building, and then two members who are in favor of full remote. Thank you. Does that, are you? Does this help, Brooke? Do you have direction? Okay, and you will keep us posted with
Absolutely, of course, of course.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for the thoughtful discourse and opinions, and um, it's not easy, and it'd be easy if we knew when, when we'll see the light at the end of the tunnel, but, okay. So now for something completely different and exciting, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Elaine, and we know this is an old business, it's unfinished business, so that's a new thing that we learned from Glenn that we need to add to our um, agenda. Um, okay, it's all yours, Elaine.
Uh, okay, thank you. Um, it's gonna be an interesting segue, I think, from the conversation that we just had. Um, Alita, could you share uh, the presentation? Um, please, and while you're doing that, I think I have a good segue here. Um, there's something that I do wanna make really clear before I begin, and I might say it throughout. Um, this is an extraordinary year. I think that we all know that's an understatement. Um, I really, really see and respect how hard everyone is working just to survive the year. Um, and that's, you know, the teachers and the administrators and the leaders, but also the students and the parents and the community members, like eh, everyone's just doing the best that they can. Um, and I am not trying to put anything new on anyone's plate here, um, and that includes guilt. Guilt, blame, or shame about one more thing that people quote-unquote should be doing. Um, so I just hope that everyone can kind of keep that in mind, um, as I give some more specifics about the work that I've been doing. Um, so actually, Alita, if you could please go to the third slide, because the second slide is just a link to the presentation that I gave um, a couple meetings ago. And since then, so I talked to about a dozen people one-on-one, both inside and outside the district, um, and I've continued reading and researching and making observations. Um, one thing that I should have touched on last time is that things are, are already happening all over the district. Like, I'm not bringing forward anything revolutionary, um, or new here. There's a lot of people within the district that are already stepping up, um, and I know this slide only has a few things on it. Um, I didn't even mention the mascot on here, um, but I think that sort of makes the point that some sort of clearinghouse would be helpful, um, to coordinate and help support everyone that's out there doing the work. Um, and I should note that our communities are doing this as well, so for example, Stowe just formed its Equity Working Group. Um, Bolton Economic Development Commission is looking at Diversity Equity Inclusion, D E I. Um, and our local libraries are doing some really cool programming right now, um, and it's important to connect all these things and kind of shine a light on them as a whole. Um, but that doesn't mean that the school committee doesn't have our own work to do. Um, we're not passive in this, and we can't just sort of sit back and ask for a presentation about what the district's doing. Um, I definitely think we need to get some training ourselves um, so that we can look at all the topics that come to our table through this sort of lens of equity. Um, and I wanna give Steve a shout-out on this for doing exactly that with the issue of the black-owned banking. Um, that was a learning experience in the end, um, but it's exactly the type of thing we can do as a school committee. Um, it's also a good example of how we need to coordinate with others because um, it was possible there that good intentions might have ended up with a negative impact, um, so I think it's just a really good example um, all around. And then, of course, as the school committee, we have our big three, right? We have our superintendent's goals and evaluation via personnel, we have the budget, and then we have policy, and all three of those subcommittees um, are already, you know, getting started with this sort of thing. Um, so next slide, please. So like Kathy mentioned earlier, a few of us attended a webinar um, by Dr. Kalise Warnum last weekend, put on by M A S E, and it was, it was excellent. Um, I wanna share a couple of her main points, and I know that the district uses responsive classroom, and for people that are trained in that, I think this will sound familiar. Um, also Maslow Before Bloom, which I know is a better motto this year. Um, so Dr. Warnum spoke a lot about cultural proficiency, and sometimes when people think about cultural proficiency, um, we think we're talking about ethnic culture and translating things into languages other than English. It is that, but it's also a lot broader than that. Um, she spoke about being able to speak the figurative language of each student, so maybe that's sports, maybe it's music, maybe it's oral versus written um, communication, maybe it's live face-to-face versus an asynchronous string of emails. Um, it means getting through to kids in ways that work for the kids, um, so that they're ready and, in a place to learn. Um, and this applies not just to teachers and students, but really to any personal relationship, and especially right now, I think relationships are more important than anything that we could possibly do. Um, so basically, she said, take this quote and picture students reading this to us, um, from Ralph Ellison's Invisible Man. Using plainer language, they're basically saying, show me that you understand me and that you understand what matters to me, and only after you do that can I let my guard down, and then I'll be learn, open to learning the academics. Um, but if you can do that, if any adult can do that, well, then we'll have a deep connection, and I'll be able to go out into the world and do great things and really make a difference. Um, so that's what our students need from us first and foremost, and that's actually what equity is really all about. Um, next slide, please. So then she relayed to us her three prerequisites for becoming a culturally proficient school district. Number one, it starts with us adults. We all have bias and attitudes, and it's our responsibility to examine them both personally and professionally. Um, number two, acknowledge that we didn't necessarily create the issues, but we do have a responsibility to work on them. Um, and three, we need to continually return our focus to the students. They are trying in their own ways to tell us who they are and what their needs are, and we have a responsibility to listen and to continuously try to re-center everything back to those students, um, when we get off track, and it is human nature to get off track. So next slide, please. Um, and so now I wanna kind of return back to Nishoba. I actually told, stole the title of this slide from the plan in Lexington, Listen, Learn, and Enlist, um, which I think nicely encapsulates us at the current moment. Um, again, I absolutely acknowledge that a lot of this is already going on, and it's awesome. Um, but if we're talking about phases and where we are at as an entire district, I think we're very much still in this initial listen, learn, and list phase. Um, I listed some ideas out here. Um, but even since this weekend, when I posted the presentation, I've heard some really cool ideas about things like creating a padlet of educational resources, advertising events and programs that others like our libraries are doing, um, or potentially collaborating with other, uh, other groups on things like an interconnected and social justice-themed arts show entitled All My Relations that will be held at the Stowe Town Park on May first and second. Sorry, it's a, it's a shameless plug, but I thought I would throw that out. Um, and I, and I, what I really wanna call out about this slide is that everything on here could be boiled down into one word, and that's empathy. So where we are right now as a district, and the thing we need to focus on, um, in my opinion, is empathy. Um, and the good news is, is that something that will help us um, in all aspects of our lives at this current moment, in the, in this year, this crazy year that we're all in. Um, so last slide, please, or next slide. Um, so here's my recommendation, that we form what I've dubbed a Planning Hub Committee. It's basically similar to a liaison, um, but we're talking about a group of people. Uh, the Planning Hub wouldn't do all the things I talked about in the last presentation, um, because that was a lot I've learned. Um, and what I've learned in the last four weeks is that, one, everyone's exhausted, and so focusing on voluntary people and groups that are energized about this is a good way to make progress in this particularly challenging year. Um, two, there's a lot of people right now, um, still that think that equity and anti-racism in particular is work that other people need to do. Um, that because we are a predominantly white, affluent, and Christian set of communities, this doesn't really apply to us. Um, I would argue it's the exact opposite, and that's precisely why we need to do this, but um, having those conversations takes repeated interaction, it takes self-reflection, and therefore it takes a lot of time. Um, so finally, the, the third thing I've learned is that a lot of school districts and towns are doing something similar right now, and there's a uh, a long waitlist and backlog for professional agencies and consultants to come in. Um, I think we do definitely need that kind of help, but we also need to get started in the meantime, and so this sort of encapsulates that. Um, so my highlights are totally voluntary and temporary for the school year. Uh, builds relationships among groups and strengthens our foundations, and helps us all to grow through this extraordinary year. Um, that's the presentation. I actually had put in some calls to the Attorney General's hotline um, to understand what the open meeting law implications would be for different types of structures. Um, and it looks like anything that the school committee would create would be considered um, a public body and would be subject to open meeting laws. Um, my next step is to learn how that intersects with student privacy laws, um, and if we would need to have students somehow be separate from this and have to do their own thing, or if we could combine them into a group like this that's acting voluntarily. So I knew I was gonna get that question, um, and I wanted to provide that update, even though it didn't make it into the presentation.
So, thank you. Um, what are, what do you see as next steps? Are there action steps that you would like to um, pursue with the committee?
So if the committee would be willing, um, the next steps would be a call out for volunteers, both people inside or outside of the district. God are excited about this, that are interested, um, and to call what would be a public meeting, um, of them that I could lead initially, that would s- take stock of who's interested and what their skills are, um, and how we might be able to structure ourselves, um, in order to gain some momentum.
Okay, and it sounds like this I should have been prepared. Hang on, Steve. Oh, I'll call on Steve because I need to look something up. Steve?
And you know I'll talk a long time.
No, you cannot talk a long time.
What, what I would like to know is, could we create this group, at least initially, something like the parents' group of the high school? Not, we, we wouldn't call it that, obviously, but I'm saying something connected but not connected, in order to get started and bring in the kinds of people or bring in the volunteers that we want, without officially hooking ourselves up to the school committee at, at least at the beginning. Is that possible?
Yeah, so I totally understand what you're saying, um, and it was my thought as well. So the tricky part about that is, is that to be what's considered a working group, so instead we have the Energy Working Group, um, and I actually just formed an Equity Working Group. Um, like, no public figure can be involved, so the group would have to have its, its own leader, um, and that's not something that I feel like And that's not something that I feel like I can control, right? And they could then like, so for example, come and present to the school committee on something, but they'd have to do the work entirely on their own. So it's something that like I couldn't be involved in. So selfishly, I don't like that idea.
I, I understand. I agree with you on that one, yeah.
But if, I mean, if there are people that wanted to do that and sort of organize it on their own or, or, or organize it through the superintendent, but I also don't want to volunteer that because I think that it's too much. Right now, I think that it's too much to just throw more things on people's plates. Just because the structure would dictate it. Yeah, so it, we're kind of in a, kind of in a sticky middle ground. Yeah.
So, so this would be, and I wanted to, to make sure I had the right language and then I'll, I'll call on Mary. But this would actually, it sounds like it would be an advisory to the school committee. And that the difference is that subcommittees are composed of only school committee members, but advisory committees are formed by the school committee and contain membership of non-school committee members such as parents, school committee members, et cetera. They are formed for a specific purpose and are dissolved when the purpose is complete. And they give the example of the superintendent's search. And using an advisory committee allows for a structured way to engage the community. It is also a way to utilize the expertise of people outside the committee. So I think that's the, what this would be. Especially as we get started and it may evolve into something else. But that's the, the, the bucket, I think that we would put this in if we wanted. I, and it sounds like that, that there's interest on the committee and moving forward. But let me, Mary had her hand up before.
Because I was able, Elaine, great job on that. And because I was able to hear this presentation to Dr. Warnum, who is such a dynamic speaker and so compelling in her presentation. And so a couple of things, advisory might be the way to go. You know, advisory to the school committee. But, but also part of the message was that in any community, you start with the adults. And, and so we, I know we have a lot on our plates right now, but to have anti-bias training for a school committee would certainly be something that I think would give us all a background knowledge, enough knowledge to be able to go forward. What Dr. Warnum talked about was, and she does lots of presentations, not just for in education, but business. And, and so when she gets a group of adults together, she asked them to be self-reflective and think of, think about what is your culture? And she said that she was amazed at how many people said, I don't, I don't have a culture. And so part, and, but that was very telling for her to be able to help people to understand that yes, each one of us has a culture. And, and we need to be able to look and be able to identify it. Maybe not as predominant a culture as, as might be recognizable in some other people, but each of us, yes, we do have a culture. So I, I think that there could be many different ways of going at this. And I know that we have a lot of meetings right now, even prior to school communes. School committee, we learned about Robert's Rules of Order, we're going to have budget, we're going to have legal. But eventually I would really like to recommend that the school committee has some anti-bias training too. Because I think that would be a great place for us to start. And then we can figure out, each of us can, what our culture is.
Other questions or comments for Elaine? Mike?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rich, can you, can I see you? Cause I didn't see you.
I just have a super quick comment. Mike, is that right?
Your voice.
I'll defer to Rich.
Rich, you've been referred to. Go ahead.
All right, super quick comment. Elaine, we may want to talk about working groups because I've been on all town official working groups. With like the, 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 uh, town administrator, the board of selectmen, I was chair of the finance committee and then the chair of the capital planning. So I think there might be some misunderstanding there, but maybe I don't understand where you're coming from and maybe the definitions changed, but perhaps we could talk about that.
Okay.
Mike?
Okay, Mike, to you.
Sharon. Elaine, once again, your, um, your presentation comes on the heels of a difficult conversation and it feels like breath of fresh air. So thank you. It's not a question, it's more of a comment and it sort of speaks to Mary's comment. I think what we're at the forefront of is a cultural shift, a major cultural shift within the district. Because I think if from what it sounds like, putting these groups together could have impact on our policy, certainly on what classrooms look like, what our curriculum looks like. And ultimately how our kids leave our district and what kind of citizens they become. So I think that you'll, you'll, you or we will probably find that this really doesn't have a ceiling to it, right? You can keep promoting this and you can keep spreading this. And, you know, it turns into professional development for teachers. It turns into different approaches and how guidance counselors view their caseload. How teachers interact and, and, and how they, how they present their, their, their content. So kudos to you. I mean, this is, this is awesome. This is where we need to be, in my opinion. So thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Every speaker I've heard and book I've read has said that this becomes a way of life. It's not just something, you know, you do once, it becomes a way of life after you practice it over. And over again, and like, I was going to say something else and now I have already forgotten what it is. So if I think of it, I'll come back to it.
Other questions or comments for Elaine? Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's actually, question is directed to you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the agenda and this is on the agenda as a non-action item. So I, I did have a question for the vice chair, but if it's not an action item, I will not ask my question and we'll move on to something else. So.
I thought, well, see, maybe I made a mistake because I thought we were going to try to make a decision about not necessarily a vote, but I, I feel like there is some, there's definitely interest and we want to start to build some momentum. But maybe in an informal way as opposed to really designating it as a an advisory. So Elaine, what is your, and I see Elaine is, is the leader. And I think it's, it's, it's something that we, that, that we made a pledge to do and a commitment to do and we need leadership. But it's the type of thing that I would want to work on and give my support to while I'm on the committee, but also when I leave the committee. Because this is just such a, it's in, to say it's important is just so obvious. But it's the type of thing that really makes a difference for everybody and I want to be involved. So I'm sorry, Joseph, did you add some?
Well, no, I'll ask my question anyways and I apologize. It's, it, it may seem like a very mundane question, but you know, there's a, there's a term that we use in modern day vernacular as like trigger words. And I heard a trigger word and I thought, oh, wait a minute. But I want to just get a clarification from the vice chair about, you said you're going to hold a, a public meeting? And I was, I didn't really understand what you meant by a public meeting.
Oh, I just, I just meant that if you, an advisory of the school committee is still subject to the open meeting law. So you got to post your agendas 48 hour in advance, it's got to be held in public or on Zoom with a public link, that kind of thing. Minutes that can.
Leah?
So I think that, again, this is great, awesome job Elaine, it's awesome. You shared with a little of this at policy the other day and how your group might seek to influence or enhance our policies. I would say that formalizing or institutionalizing, whatever you want to call it, this committee is important. So even though we would have to tangle with open meeting law, I think that I would support creating an advisory committee so that we can start moving ahead and building this hub. As Elaine called it, so.
So I don't think, yeah, Elaine, go ahead.
I remembered what I was going to say.
Yay!
Yay! I love it when that happens. I was just going to say, you know, I, I agreed with what you were saying, Mike. You were talking about how things can kind of grow from there. And when I was on vacation-ish for a few days there, I went off the grid. And I had to think about like, how do I make this year sustainable for me? Cause in my own ways as a parent, I'm feeling a lot of the same pressures that people are describing in, in other parts of their life. And I was like, well, I need to pare back. I need to like take things off my plate and really focus on what I think is the most important. And I kept coming back to this, actually. And the reason is not just because it alone is really important, but when I think about all the other things that are important to me, it starts to feel like this is actually at the foundation of all of those things. And that if we gain some momentum and make some strides in equity, it's going to help with student voice. It's going to help with community relations. It's going to like help with our policies. It's going to like, it's going to start helping everything. And then I, I just feel like the, the potential for momentum for us as a district in so many ways all kind of comes back to this. And so this is really where I want to focus my time and energy for this year when every, when time and energy is certainly at a premium.
So it's within the purview of the school committee to establish subcommittees and also advisory committees. So maybe would someone want to make a motion that we establish? Oh, I, I saw Steve, I'm going to let Steve take it. Take it away, Steve.
I would like to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
That's a Nishoba Regional School Committee. Establish a working advisory committee on promoting equity, acceptance and racial justice. And I nominate, wow, no, that's, that would be a second.
Okay, can I have a second for that motion? Sharon is seconding. Any discussion or question? Seeing none? Let's find my little voting sheet.
Amy's got something.
Okay, Amy, go. To go for Amy.
Sorry, the only, the only thing I wonder is whether we should include a diversity in the name of the working advisory. I'm, I'm Elaine, I applaud all your efforts. I think it's wonderful. I'm totally in favor of this. My only question is whether we should include the word diversity in the name of the working advisory task force group? This, I've seen it, when I've seen this in other places, it's diversity, equity and acceptance. If, if, it's, it's, maybe it's semantics, just throwing that out there.
Do you want to amend the motion, Amy?
Sure, I'll make a motion to amend the name of the working group to promoting diversity, equity, acceptance and racial.
I second that motion.
Okay, who's seconded?
Rich did.
Okay, Rich. So we're voting on the amendment to change the name of the advisory to include the word diversity. So we're voting on the amendment. I will go first. Kathy, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is now to create an advisory to, what did you say, Steve? What was the verb? Quarter to nine, I'm starting to lose it, but go ahead.
We have to ask Alita to read it back.
All right.
As amended.
Yep.
Christie, then the Shalva Regional School Committee established a working advisory committee for equity, acceptance, diversity and racial justice.
Okay, can I have a second?
Oh, we already had that.
Rich had seconded, first and second.
Okay, great. All right.
We already had that. We, we're voting on the original that she just read.
Okay, so Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Absolutely, yes.
And Kathy, yes. Okay, we have a committee on equity, acceptance, racial adjustments and justice and diversity. And it will be led by Elaine Sanfilippo. If there are members of the committee that are interested in being on it, please get in touch with Elaine. I have already reserved my spot. So, thank you. Okay, Leah?
Great job, Elaine.
Thank you. Yeah, Leah?
Just really quickly, how should or how will you recruit members for the committee? I don't know if we covered that.
Not yet, but Elaine will, I'm going to leave that for Elaine. Because I would like to, after this triumph, I would like to keep us moving, unless you have a quick answer, Elaine.
No, I was just going to say, I will figure that out, given Thanksgiving is next week. I'll probably take that week to talk to some people I've already been talking to and, and come up with something right after Thanksgiving.
Okay, so we will put this on our agenda for a committee report out and we will get updates on a regular basis. And thank you, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your commitment. And thank you to this committee for, we, like I like to say, we've put a stake in the stand and we are ready to move forward. So thank you. And it's a, a long journey, but we'll get there. Okay. So the next thing on our agenda is the business manager updates. Pat?
Hi.
Hi.
Alita, can you put up the results of operations for October 31st, please? And in, in the meantime, I don't know how many of you have looked at this, but if you have any questions, I can answer them. So September isn't really that much different than, I mean, October isn't that much different than September. There are a few changes because different things have come to light. I, I would like to say that in the, in our future, we're going to have to take a look at the food services program. In, in the event that they should operate in a negative, we would have to absorb those costs in our budget. And again, I'd like to mention transportation, which again is part of the system wide description in that department. Right now, it appears that we have a, a little bit of a surplus in, in that. But if we go to hybrid at the high school, again, I, I just want you to know that that would probably eat up any of the surplus that we have in that bottom line. Because we'll have to run quite a few more buses. And that's, that will be the biggest expense. One, one of my biggest concerns is what's going to happen after December 31st. The grants that we have will cover our expenditures until, until that point. After that, there's nothing in place. I was hoping that maybe, you know, people will be reaching across the aisle at, at the federal level and maybe decide that they, we might some, need something a little bit more coming into the first of the year, but that hasn't happened. So what we have right now is we have some people that are out on the FFCRA. And it, it looks like we have a little bit of a savings in the salary lines for that. I projected it out as if they were going to be paid their full salary at the end of the year. But at this point, some of them that have been paid at a lower rate, being out on that FFCRA. It's, it, it really is. It's, it really isn't portraying what could actually happen. One question that I've had over and over again is from, from the towns, actually. Back when we had the tri-town meeting. There was a question about facilities and savings and utilities. I really don't foresee that. Only because right now when we're heating the buildings, we're requesting that, you know, they open the windows just even just a little bit on these cold days to allow some of the fresh air to circulate because that's the best way for the, you know, be guaranteed that the air flowing through their classrooms is, is best. And that in itself will cost us. And that in, in itself will cost us a little bit more in our utilities. Um, granted, um, the high school is, where, there are people in the high school, although the full building isn't occupied, you know, by students. There will be a little bit of savings in that building, but I'm not anticipating any huge savings at this point in time. So does anybody have any other questions?
I don't see any questions, Pat. Um, I think that it sounds like, for lack of a better term, we're, we're pretty flush until the end of December.
I would say so. I think we'll um make it till that point. And then we can see what happens just after the first of the year. Um, I would say we'll probably have a, a better indicator sometime in, in February.
Okay.
Whether or not we're gonna be in any trouble.
I wonder, I know that this is our typical um format, but you did reference um salaries and, and food services. I'm wondering in light of the unique circumstances of this year where um these line items might need to be for us unpacked a little bit so we can see specific references uh, to things. Um, and again, I mean, this, these are an, it's an unusual time. If we have grant money that covered and, and at the last meeting, I think, or the meeting before that, we got a lot of information about that. How many of those expenses will continue to be expenses after December 31st? Um, which ones um will just be that we've bought that stuff and we've got enough? So just moving forward, if we could, if, be thinking along those lines. So when the grant money is no longer available, what are the things we'll still need to, to purchase and?
One thing, one thing that um I'd like to mention is the fact that we've hired remote learning teachers.
Okay.
And some, the grant will cover their salaries up until the end of December.
Yep.
But there are still going to be kids that are in that ro- remote learning. So we're gonna have to cover their salaries.
Okay, that's, yeah. That, so things like that, if we could get.
Another thing would be the uh increase in the cost of our bandwidth. Again, we're only, they're only covering us till December.
Right.
So.
So like I said, those are things that would, we would need to look at to see really where we are budgetarily. Not knowing if there's gonna be any more funding um to, to help out.
And also on the revenue side, I, I don't, I didn't produce a revenue report because it really, at this point, it really doesn't even mean anything.
Yep.
Except that money is coming in.
Yeah.
If we get reduction in funding, say in chapter 70, or in any of our other revenue sources, that will truly truly affect um how our spending goes.
Okay. No, so just to, to uh maybe um look at some projections with that so we can anticipate, but this is where we are at this point in time. Correct?
Yep.
Almost a month ago.
Yeah, it was a month ago, really. I mean, things have changed a lot since then.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions for Pat?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, Pat, if you don't mind me asking, have you connected with, if this is too operational, forgive me, but have, have you had an opportunity to connect with the town administrator and Stowe about CARES money?
No, I, no, I haven't, Rich. I'm working on something right now. I'm putting together some numbers for that um conversation.
Okay, yeah.
At least I have that together.
Yeah, that's okay. I was just curious because she was.
Communication that we had talked.
Yeah, we talked, Steve and I and um, well, I guess Elaine and uh and um.
Leah.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, Leah. I had spoken to Denise and um and, and also this was a theme that I heard at, was at a meeting last night too. So. Anyway.
Thank you. Um, I'll sat with Pat, anyone? Okay, thank you, Pat. Uh, committee reports? Steve, budget warrant?
Well, thank, th- thank you for doing all the reporting for me and asking all the questions that I had written down. We had our meeting um on the 12th and uh we spoke with Pat at length primarily about being able to take out and track some of the additional expenses that COVID-19 has put upon the school district, including things like the additional PD costs. And um, we know, of course, that there's transportation issues. We know that there are food service issues. We know that there are substitute teacher salaries that we, that, that right now does not look bad, but when you spread it over a year, it's going, uh, these things are going to have major impact upon us. Yeah, there have been some savings in some of the athletic transportation because we haven't been driving kids around in the school buses to all of the various sports that we, that we normally have in the fall. And once again, remember, this is only six weeks worth of school right here. And uh, it's, it's, it's going to get much, much worse. There are a lot of things funding, for example, food service funding and uh other things that expire on 12/31. And until at least the 21st of uh January, we really don't have a whole lot of uh outlook for anything being better than, than it is right now. If this is going to impact uh the projected expenditures into next year, uh while you're, while you're um looking at that column that, that's showing uh a projected expenditures of $11 million, that's certainly going to increase significantly as we muddle through probably another six months to seven months of uh COVID expenses, additional expenses, additional teachers uh that we need for the uh remote learning academy. All of these things that are kind of hidden in here right now because of the way we look, we look at the budget items, they're gonna start poking out uh just like the uh, those little spikes on the uh.
Yeah, don't say that, it's gross. Come on, just move it. Let's go.
Excuse me? I was talking about the COVID uh virus.
I know you were. I don't like that.
All right, all right, all right, all right. Um, but these are things we have to look forward to, number one. Number two, we're going to start uh this, the, the budget process, we'll be starting, we'll be doing the uh, the budget, it will be doing a budget um kind of primer for anyone who's interested on the 2nd of December at 5 o'clock. And of course, on the 20, I think it's the 23rd or 24th, something like that, in January, we'll be sitting and listening to all of the department heads and all of the principals giving us their dream sheets for next year's budget. And it will be, um, it will, then, then the process starts and we will maintain our normal schedule of budget preparation through the spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mary?
Madam Chair, Madam Chairman, I had one quick question for uh Steve. Am I interrupting? Mary, were you gonna ask Steve something or are we, are you moving on?
I'm doing the committee reports. So he delivered the report.
Okay.
Okay?
I was just gonna make one quick comment.
Go ahead.
Could we, could we send out individual invitations to each of the select board members?
So excuse me, Rich. That's in the scope of the, the budget and warrant committee. This is a, an open meeting. Uh, the public has access to us, to it. Um, and Brooke is, Elia is on with the uh town administrators with all things budget. So.
Okay.
Everyone is welcome.
Let's have them come to the, to the budget.
No, not, not to the subcommittee meetings.
No.
Not the subcommittee meetings.
Excuse me, excuse me. It is 8:58. And I would like to move to the next committee report. Um, if there are no objections.
There are no objections, just making a comment.
Thank you. Mary?
So last week, we changed the date of our next meeting from today at 4 o'clock to November 23rd, Monday at 4 o'clock. That's the report.
Thank you, Mary. Um, policy?
Hi, everyone. So um, we had our policy meeting uh yesterday. We discussed, or rather sought input from Brooke on the update with regard to training administrators on investigation procedure. And she is hot trot on that, hoping to get that training in place sometime in January. Uh, that was a recommendation from the independent investigator report that um, that training be done as soon as possible. So that's great. Uh, our committee continues to look at school council efficacy across the district. This is something that, considering our year, is probably not going to happen uh anytime in the immediate future, but just trying to study what's going on there and uh make sure that our district is in compliance.
Thank you.
Um, our next thing that we're looking at is um travel policy. Uh, what families can refer to with regard to out-of-state travel or travel to higher-risk states? And in Brooke's most recent email to the community, you can find a link to the protocol that you should follow as a family um with regard to the need to quarantine, et cetera. And it's basically the Massachusetts guidelines.
Very good.
And then uh the last thing here, which is probably the most important, is that we would like to request an agenda item at the next meeting to bring forth an updated policy on public comment. Inherent in this conversation would be um, not necessarily adding this to the policy per se, but asking the committee to consider returning back toward public, the public actually speaking their own comments in the Zoom meeting.
Okay, so we'll add that to the December 2nd uh as an agenda item.
That would be great.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think Brooke wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, just to let you know that I ha- I have confirmed that we will be having that training in January.
Thank you. Okay, and last but not least, Mr. Horish, communication?
I would say last but certainly not least, uh communications.
Certainly least.
On the 10th, I'm sorry, Steve, I wasn't listening. Uh, we met on the 10th and um we had uh discussions on two points. One was to revisit a notion that Kathy had brought up at the outset of last year, which was to engage with the community directly prior to uh a school committee meeting. And uh I think we're going to at least pilot that. Which I think is a great step in um the right direction for um kind of tying the community together with the school committee. The other thing that we're gonna do is um engage with a uh, a communication consultant courtesy of uh Todd. Um, and we're going to invite him to one of our meetings to sort of discuss what we see as um communication challenges and what we see as communication resources and then see if he's able to advise us on um next steps. Um, so we'll report on that uh in the uh coming weeks.
Super. Thank you. And so, let me see, here it is. Um, the next item on our agenda, whoop, hang on. I'm all screwed up here. Okay. So items to be considered for next and or future agendas. So the next scheduled meeting is December 2nd. We do have a voluntary legal training with Mike McCarron, starting at 4:50. I have that there will be a food services update, Brooke. Is that correct? Uh, school choice discussion? Uh, Brooke, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. We, we have a school choice discussion every year at this time of year.
Okay. And it's the discussion, is that necessarily that we have?
A vote.
The pu- but do we, generally before the meeting or the beginning of the meeting, for the first 10 minutes, we offer a, a public forum?
Yes, you're welcome, you're welcome to do that. We can do that too, we can add that.
Okay, we're gonna have to figure out the logistics of that. Okay?
Did you say, look, excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Did you say Mike McCarron on the 2nd?
Oh, no, it's wrong. I'm sorry, that's the 16th. I'm sorry, the, the second is the budget primer. Thank you, Steve. Um, and then the uh preschool extended day fee review. Is that something we have to do at that time or do you wanna?
We, uh, well, I think that we can take a look at the, the preschool. I don't know if we'll be making any uh recommendations, to be honest with you, on that, but we generally do visit it and that's just kind of, that's just part of our fabric now that we revisit these things every year at this time. And that's just, that's just one, there's nothing burning. It's just that we like to kind of parse these units out uh leading into the budget season.
Okay. And then we've added the policy um um uh agenda item on public comment. And then um, there are a series of updates that, that we have um put in place. I think we will have a presentation by the high school on the hybrid model. Um, the school hybrid. Um, if there's anything to report on the principal search um or the mascot, we would like updates on those. Um, Amy?
Yeah, what about the um election of the student representative to the school committee?
We can get an update on that as well. I think the elections were held today, so I'm not quite sure what the status is.
Okay.
So we can get an update on that. Other updates or agenda items? Joseph?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is not, nothing to add to the upcoming agenda. It, it's more of a stylistic comment. So if I'm just, understand correctly, then we're gonna be doing our annual school choice public hearing, correct? On December 2nd?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Is that correct, um, Brooke? Brooke, you're muted, you know?
Yeah, yes, you normally do. I, I'll have Alita, Alita's on here too, yeah. You, you can maybe just take a quick peek. Sorry, take a quick peek for me to see if we separate the hearing from the, because I think that we generally do. I think we separate, we, we, if memory serves me right, kind of discuss it, have the public hearing, make the decision.
Okay.
We usually have it in two different meetings. We usually have a discussion and then we have to post because it has to be posted seven days in advance for a he- for a public hearing.
Okay.
Make sure that we do that correctly, is what I was going to say.
All right, thank you.
All right, so Madam Chair, so just so I'm clear, December 2nd, it's not on for public hearing?
No, no public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, Joseph, for clarifying. Brooke?
At, at some point in time, we, I'd really like to have some discussion, uh, an update on MSBA as well, uh particularly in light of the um information that we recently submitted. And, and I think that, I know that our agendas are so jam-packed and I don't know how we can bring this, these meetings lengths into something shorter, but I'd love to. But I really want you to see the information that we had to generate for MSBA, uh particularly the educational profile. And that's probably gonna take more, so maybe it's not for the first meeting in summer, maybe it's the second or maybe it's the first meeting in January. But at some point in time, I really want you to take a look at what we, what we had to submit. Because I think it's.
Let's, so let's tentatively put that on December 16th. Okay? All right, anything else? So um I have some bad news. Um, we don't need to have the executive session. So we actually will be uh getting out of here relatively early. Um, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I want to thank everyone um for the tremendous amount of work and service to our communities. Um, it is, um, uh, it's, I, I can't believe how hard we've worked, well, since March, but particularly over the summertime up until this point. And I'd like to entreat everyone to just take this time, um even though we're, we're gonna be meeting in December, take the time starting now, tomorrow, whenever, to, to just, you know, I don't think there's anything that is urgent that we need to do, but just to breathe and relax and do some self-care. And this applies to the superintendent and her administrative leadership team and to the superintendent personally. Um, because it's, it's this, I said to Brooke when I was um teaching and a school administrator, this is an emotionally fraught time of the year anyway, in normal times. There's so much emotion going on. And if you're in a middle school, there's drama, more so than normal. Um, and there's just so many other stressors at play here. So please, take care of yourself, take care of your families. Um, we're an extraordinary group and uh we've got more stuff to do. But thanks for all you do and please, take some time to take care of yourself and your families. So on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
And second? Okay, Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike? Joseph?
Yes.
Rich? Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Oh, look, a child!